I call this meeting of the City of Pahokee City Commission regular meeting of Tuesday, April the eighth, two thousand twenty-five to order at six oh four PM. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Mike Pearson. All about the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Reverend and Father, we just come to you gracious and humble, thanking you for all things, Father. We ask that you just bless us, bless this meeting and bless us with wisdom that we be able to move your city forward, Father. That we be able to work together in unity, Father. Father, we ask that you just protect our community and keep your head to protection around us, Father, as this community move forward. And we commit this community back into your hands, Father. We just thank you, Father. We ask that you just touch each and every one of our minds, Father, so whatever that's done here tonight and throughout the year, that it'll be pleasing in your sight, Father, that you will be glorified in the most eternal. Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to have one more chance to give right today what we didn't yesterday. And we just thank you for your divine grace, Father. Father, we just commit this city into your hands in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Father which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have the swearing in of our newly elected City Commissioners and Mayor.
I state your name.
I, James H. Scott.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
Constitution, government of the United States of America.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
And the charter of the City of Pahokee.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
And duties of the office.
Of Commissioner.
And of Commissioner.
With the City of Pahokee.
With the City of Pahokee.
On which I am now about to enter.
Now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I.
I.
State your name.
Keith W. Bab, Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm, or swear, that I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
And state of Florida.
And state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
That I am, that I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of Mayor.
The duties of the office of Mayor.
With the City of Pahokee.
With the City of Pahokee.
On which I am now about to enter.
And which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. I.
I.
State your name.
Mayor Bowden.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
And charter of the City of Pahokee.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
That I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of Commissioner.
Of Commissioner.
With the City of Pahokee.
With the City of Pahokee.
On which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Calvin Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, staff. And most importantly, thank each of you for being here today to participate and witness our City Commission meeting this evening. At this time, we'll move through the agenda. City Manager, at this time, do we have any additions for emergency bases?
No, sir.
Any deletions?
Oh, Mayor Bab, I have additions.
It should come from the other. It comes from the City Manager.
I had spoken to Commissioner Calvin Williams a few days ago, and yesterday I was under an impression she was going to bring it under a future agenda item. But there is a concern that she has and the community has and the city at large has regarding the security at the, at the pool at the marina. And we, we've discussed some opportunities and options that she, she would like to see implemented. There's no agenda item for it. There's no resolution for it.
What you can be able to do is put it under your report.
Sure.
And talk about it at that time.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor Bab. So you're saying that as a Commissioner, we cannot add any items to the agenda?
No, we have an opportunity prior to a commission meeting to bring it forth as a agenda item request. And then it must be voted on by the majority of the commission to move it forward.
But we don't get to see the items that the City Manager is putting on the agenda either until they are put on? And so if we have some concerns about them, you're saying that there's nothing we can do about it?
Not at this particular time unless we change some way our protocol in dealing with add-on agenda items. The main thing with an agenda, you want to have an opportunity to know and give public notice of what would be on the agenda.
But we don't know everything that the City Manager is putting on. We know what we asked for, future agenda items. But he put his items on and we don't get to see it until the agenda comes out.
Right. But you're questioning yourself for add-on. All I'm saying is, we're not able from this floor to add-on an item during a regular commission meeting. You can do it prior to the meeting to be added. And the reason is, someone look at our agenda and they say, well, I want to be there because they're going to be discussing this. I want a person to be there. So if you discuss an item prior to that, prior to proper notification, they are not aware of it. So by public law, you're not able to do it.
But it has been done in the past.
I just have the City Attorney just as bound on anything I say to clarify the things that need to be done.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It is a sunshine type issue. The idea is that you want to give the public as much notice as possible and that you don't, you know, vote on or even in some cases bring up anything that you think could be controversial at a meeting where the public doesn't have notice. And so the way that your agenda is structured, you all can say things under your report. Obviously, you can, the manager can bring forward the concerns of the public. And you can also put it on as a future agenda item to be discussed fully at the following meeting. So that it gives the public the opportunity to understand what issues are going to be presented so that they can appear if they choose.
Okay. So you can put an order in place. I don't know how to handle it. Okay.
Okay. Next, we have presentation, proclamation, public service announcement, public comments. We're going to move to our public comments first. This item will be given the opportunity to address the City Commission. You will have up to three minutes. Please, if you haven't already done so, you need to have a public service comment card completed prior to speaking. City, City Clerk, do you have any public service comments cards completed?
Yes, sir. We have two. The first one is Ms. Annie Eifield.
Good evening, everyone. Annie Eifield, Healthier Glaze, four ninety-one East Main Street, Pahokee. First of all, Mrs. Scott, congratulations on your position as a new Commissioner for City of Pahokee. Just want to share with you guys some upcoming events and activities. I do have Commissioner King here. And the first thing I want to talk about is the Senior Citizens Prom. Last year, as you know, we hosted the prom here in the beautiful city of Pahokee. This year, we're doing it in Clueston. You should have gotten a letter from the Chair, Ms. Janet Taylor, requesting for assistance for, because every year, the city supports the Senior Citizens Prom. So you should have gotten a letter. If you have not, let us know. We'll make sure we get that letter to you. We're asking all three of the cities to support that. The Senior Citizens Prom is a big event. It's an opportunity for our seniors to do something in the community as well as provide information and resources to them. So there's going to be June fourteenth at John Boy Auditorium in Clueston. So we rotate it every year. After Clueston, it'll go back to Belglee, correct? Okay. And then the other thing I want to talk about is next month, May, is Get Your Green On, promoting mental health awareness and trauma and form care month. I did put a request in for a proclamation with the City of Pahokee. At that time, I will give you more updates on upcoming events. One of the things that we're going to be doing at the Pahokee Marina is a mental health provider networking event where we have Be Well PVC that's going to, and also Mental Health America that's going to be talking about information and resources for providers on how to navigate in this space that we're in. Because with funding being cut, it also affects nonprofit organizations and funding to provide services for our community. So we'll be having that on May fourteenth, no, May nineteenth, excuse me, at the Pahokee Marina. And Belglee will have Reggie Ford. He's a licensed mental health therapist. Refuse to Sink Foundation is bringing him down to speak to the community about how to navigate as well in this space and also for mental health providers to take care of their own self-care. So that'll be May thirteenth in Belglee, at the Belglee Civic Center Library. And as more information becomes available, I'll make sure I share with the City Manager that we'll share with you guys. And with that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last comment is Ms. Ellie Biggs. Former Commissioner Ellie Biggs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ellie Biggs, fifteen forty-seven, Reverend Jesse Biggs Boulevard, Pahokee, Florida Citizen Village. Mayor Bab. City Manager Jackson, Commissioners, our beautiful attorney, staff, and all of you here that are here tonight. I stand, I hope I'm in keeping, I understand that there will be a proclamation for Commissioner Clara Mervin. And I want to stand tonight to give her accolades or praise for the hard work she did here. Being a former Commissioner, I know what it's like to serve the city of Pahokee. I know the ins, the outs, and the ups and the downs. So tonight, Mayor Mervin, even though your title has been a vice mayor, but your, your position was a Commissioner and you did that. I want to thank you for all that you did for this city. I want to thank you for your untiring, running back and forth and trying to make a difference in our city. Whether you know it or not, it meant a lot to me and a lot of other people. And just remember that this is not the end of the road. We still all need to be in this together to work for the advantages of this city. It takes all of us, not one or two. And my few minutes will soon be over. But to this Commission and to all of you, congratulations, Mr. Scott, Mayor Bab, and my nephew, Mr. Bowden. Thank you all for being able to be back here. But please, make a difference in this city. It's not about you. It's not about a title. It's not about who you think you are, your money, or what it is. It's about concern and love for people. And if you don't have that and don't want to see a better this city, this city, it doesn't make sense to just give up your time trying to be a big wig by saying stuff you don't even know what you're talking about. But, but grabbing on each other's hands. All of us got to learn to love each other. You may not like me, but you know what I stand for. I stand for what is right. And I ask God to bless the City of Pahokee and everybody that's sent it and all those that come here to make a difference. God bless you.
Are there any additional comments, Cora?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Bab, for the good of the order, may I request permission to speak about something on the agenda that should be on the agenda?
Not at this time. If there's not one there?
Well, this is dealing with our charter. Unless I'm overlooking it. At the first commission on meeting, during the first meeting in April, we're supposed to select a vice mayor, and I don't see it.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, I just didn't see it. Just wanted to make sure.
At this time, we have our City Manager introduce our first presenter.
Yes, Mayor and Commission, community, we have with us to present from the Commission on Ethics. She'll provide an overview is Ms. Gina Leveque. She's the intake and compliance manager for Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. And congratulations to the new Commissioners and for all of you who have sworn in. So thank you for having me. My name is Gina Leveque, and I serve as the intake and compliance manager for the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. Today, I'd like to share a little about who we are, what we do, and how we can be a resource for you. The Commission on Ethics was established in two thousand ten following the two thousand nine grand jury recommendation for ethics reform in Palm Beach County. Our mission is simple but crucial: to promote integrity of public service, build public trust, and ensure that private interests do not interfere with public duties. What sets our Commission apart is its independence. We operate separately from county or municipal governments. And our five volunteer members are appointed by independent organizations. This structure ensures fair and impartial oversight. We provide oversight, accountability, and transparency for more than twelve thousand public officials, employees, and advisory board members, as well as certain vendors and lobbyists throughout Palm Beach County. The Code of Ethics applies not only to county government, but also to all thirty-nine municipalities, ensuring that public officials and employees act with integrity, independence, and impartiality. And that a public office is never used for personal gain. But our role is not just about enforcement. It's about prevention. We place a strong emphasis on education because we believe that the best way to present, excuse me, prevent ethical violations is to ensure that people understand the rules before they make decisions. That's why we provide ongoing training, advisory opinions, to help officials and employees navigate ethical concerns before they become an issue. In fact, we've issued nearly five hundred and sixty advisory opinions to date. While we do have authority to impose penalties such as letters of reprimands and fines up to five hundred dollars per violation, our primary goal is to educate, guide, and prevent violations before they occur. We also ensure transparency by making all advisory opinions, gift forms, voting conflict forms, and complaints publicly available on our website. At the Commission on Ethics, we encourage everyone to remember one simple phrase: Ask first, act later. If you ever have a question regarding the application of the Code of Ethics, please reach out to us before making a decision or taking an action. You can find resources, request training, or contact us by visiting palmbeachcountyethics.com or by calling five six one three five five one nine one five. Thank you for your time. And most importantly, thank you for your commitment to ethical governance.
Thank you.
If anyone has any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Leveque.
Thank you so much.
Next. A second item under presentations will come in the form of a proclamation honoring former Vice Mayor Clara Mervin.
City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this is a proclamation honoring former Vice Mayor Clara Mervin, and it reads, "Former Vice Mayor Clara Mervin in her, in, has faithfully served the city of Pahokee from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-five with dedication, leadership, and unwavering commitment to public service. And whereas during her tenure, she has played an instrumental role in shaping policies and initiatives that have positively impacted the residents of the city of Pahokee, always advocating for progress, equity, and community well-being. And whereas former Vice Mayor Clara Mervin has been a tireless advocate for the interest of the city beyond its borders through her service as the District Five Board Member for the Palm Beach County League of Cities, fostering collaboration and regional cooperation. And whereas she has extended her influence and expertise to the state and national levels through her active participation in various committees for esteemed organizations such as the Florida League of Cities and the National League of Cities, ensuring that local government voices are heard and represented in border legislative discussions, in broader legislative discussions. And whereas her commitment to public service, community development, and advocacy has left a lasting legacy in the city of Pahokee, setting an example for future leaders to follow. And whereas the city of Pahokee expresses its deepest gratitude and appreciation for her years of dedicated service, leadership, and passion for making a difference in the lives of our residents. And whereas now therefore, I Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee, Florida, on behalf of the City Commission and our citizens, recognize and honor former Vice Mayor Clara Mervin for her exemplary service and contributions, and extend our best wishes for her future endeavors. In official recognition whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Pahokee to be affixed on this eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-five."
Thank you. At this time, would I have, I would like to ask the City Commission if they would join me on the floor to actually officially present the proclamation to former Mayor Clara Mervin.
As Mayor, being the ceremonial leader and head of the city, I always try to present proclamation to any former long-term Commissioner. There may have been some that haven't been presented, but the majority of them have been. Even I, former Mayor, I was all loving that was living, we presented proclamation for their service.
So, former Commissioner Clara Mervin, on behalf of the city of Pahokee, it gives me great pleasure and honor to present you with this proclamation for all your dedicated service and commitment to this city. I know you're loved by the community and you're loved by the commission and everyone involved. So, we appreciate everything you have done throughout the years. Former Commissioners, Mervin served from 2016 until 2025, nine years. So, at this time, I would like to present this to you on behalf of our city commission, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Bolden, Commissioner McPherson, our city manager, Mr. Jackson, our city attorney, Attorney Weeks, and our entire city staff.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to first say thank you to our commission. Congratulations, Mr. Scott, on your appointment. And Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney, and the city of Pahokee. I thank you. Tonight, as I stand here, is a bittersweet moment for me. After nine years of service to this incredible community, serving in this role has been one of the greatest honors of my life, besides serving and accepting Jesus Christ as my personal savior. I am deeply grateful for the trust and support you have given me throughout this journey. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my fellow commissioners, our city staff, and most importantly, the people of this community. Your voice, your concerns, and your commitment to making a difference have been the driving force behind every decision I've made. Public service is never about one person. It's all about us working together for the greater good. While this chapter has come to a close, God in his infinite wisdom is large in my territory and I thank God for that. My commitment to our community remains as strong as ever. When I first stepped into this role, my goal was simple, to fight for a better Pahokee. A city where families have access to safe and affordable housing, where our streets and our neighborhoods reflect the beauty of the people who calls this place home. Improving school safety and working towards solution for economic and housing challenges. Over the years, we have tackled and resolved some of these issues, even though there is a lot more to be done. Scripture says, "One plant, one water, but God gives increase." In this position, you will quickly learn that you cannot fleece everyone. Some will praise your efforts while others will always criticize. But true leadership is not about seeking approval, it's about standing firm in your purpose, making the best decision within information you have, and always putting the well-being of the community first. The life of a commission is not easy, but it is meaningful because it's rooted in love for the community, in the service above self, and in the belief that even in a small rural city like ours, can do big things when it comes together. As I pass this baton to you, Mr. Scott, and to the next generation of leaders, I do so with full confidence that Pahokee will continue to rise. We must keep standing together, supporting each other, and pressing forward no matter what challenges lies ahead. And then I leave you with this scripture, Joshua 19. Be strong and be courageous. Do not be afraid. Do not get discouraged. For the lawyer of God will be with you wherever you go. So, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you to the city of Pahokee. God bless you and may God bless the city of Pahokee. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Our third item under presentations will come in the form of a proclamation honoring Coach Ronald Osborne.
Sit there, Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. The city of Pahokee takes great pride in recognizing individuals who have made significant contributions to our community through their dedication and service. And whereas, Coach Ronald Osborne has served the city of Pahokee with unwavering commitment, most recently as the athletic coordinator and previously as the Director of Parks and Recreation. And whereas, Coach Osborne has dedicated his career to fostering the development of the youth and inspiring multiple generations through sports, mentorship, and community engagement. And whereas, in addition to his leadership in athletics and recreation, Coach Osborne has also served as a valued member of the Board of Commissioners for the Pahokee Housing Authority from October 26, 2021 to February 20, 2025, demonstrating his passion for the betterment of our city. And whereas, Coach Osborne's service to the city of Pahokee concluded on January 31, 2025, leaving behind a legacy of dedication, leadership, and positive impact on the lives of many. And whereas, the city of Pahokee expresses its heartfelt appreciation for his years of service and contributions and wishes him continued success in all of his endeavors. Now therefore, I Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee, Florida, on behalf of the city commission and our citizens, recognize and honor Coach Ronald Osborne for his outstanding service and dedication to the community. His commitment and efforts have made a lasting impact and will be greatly missed. In official recognition whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of Pahokee to be affixed on this eighth day of April, 2025."
Thank you. City Commissioners, would you join me downstairs so we can present this proclamation to Mr. Ronald Osborne?
Mr. Osborne, Coach Osborne, you know strangers of Pahokee. It gives me great honor as a mayor of this city of Pahokee. On behalf of the Pahokee City Commission, Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Edric, Commissioner Bolden, our city manager, Jackson, our city attorney, Miss Weeks, and along with our entire city staff, to present you with this proclamation for all your dedication and your years of service. You're a legend. You're a hero. I know working for the city of Pahokee, for any place, sometimes you may not feel like you're appreciated and respected. But I can tell you from the bottom of my heart, as a mayor of this city, you are loved by this community. Working with this city, people stood up and talked about you in a positive way. They even got on us for not honoring you properly. We had had already some things in the works, but we still know how much you have been loved by this community. And we feel it and we appreciate you so much. Whatever your future endeavors, in your retirement or whatever you decide to do, we wish you Godspeed and many will, days of happiness and prosperity. We thank you, Ms. Osborne. We really appreciate you for all that you have done. So, on behalf of this city commission, I would like to present this proclamation in honor of your service to this community and the city of Pahokee. Thank you, Coach. Coach, you're a coach. I'm ready to have a speech done. I'd like you to say a few words if you would. We would like to have that. Thank you so much, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone in their respective places. 1988. Guys, if you're not sure of when Pahokee actually started recreation, it was 1988, okay? Eastlake actually was school of choice at the time. We worked at that particular site, had a latchkey after-school program, meaning kids are working parents. Our after-school program became the first after-school program in Palm Beach County, if you guys didn't know that information, alright? And that's quite an honor. Guys, it's been a challenge. There's been some good days, there's been some bad days. But that's when you're working with generations after generation after generation of families. Guys, my ambition coming out of Pahokee after athletics was always to provide leisure services programs, okay? Athletics after-school program, seeing these kids perform athletically in the classroom, in the after-school settings, was ideal. Guys, it's been, it's been a great ride for me. It's been a great ride for me. I, everywhere I go, I'm generally seeing young men that I've coached, young men that have started out in after-school programs that we offer with the city of Pahokee. Guys, it can go on and on. The best, well, I wouldn't say really a blessing that I received, but anytime I'm waking up, it's a blessing. There was a young man that I coached. He was probably one of the worst kids to ever come out of Pahokee. And if you know me, I'm not going to back down. I'm not, if you know me as a coach, because I wore different hats, okay? As a coach, when I'm on the gridiron, I'm a totally different person. I'm a totally different person. But when I'm in a professional setting, then you've got to adjust and address accordingly, okay? And this young man, he had to have been 27 years of age at that time. And he was doing some mischievous stuff, you know, drinking, smoking, and he spotted me. You know, he actually spotted me. And the young man couldn't apologize enough because he knew what I meant to him as a young man coming up and coming out of this community. And I'm like, well, listen, you know, you're grown now, you know, I know you're all going to do what you're going to do, okay? But it was, it meant a lot to hear this particular young man come out and say these type of things for me, you know, about me. So, again, with the city of Pahokee, you guys' dioceses here, I can go back for many dioceses and stuff, through 22 years here with the city of Pahokee and an additional 14 with another municipality. So, that's 36 years of working with kids, okay? And seeing this generation come up now, guys, it's time. It's very, very challenging and stuff. So, at this time, you know, but again, I'd like to thank you guys for the proclamation and blessing me to allow me to work with our community and to work with our kids, okay? Again, the goal is to always give back, okay? Always give back. And coming from Pahokee, that was always a thing for me is our own coming back to give back. A lot of times, our families, our athletes, our students, we go off to different places in life and no one never seems to want to come back. But my thing is, guys, is that no one knows our kids and our community better than us. So, you know, I tip my hat off to you guys for doing what you're doing, man. You've been doing this for quite some time now, you know? And it's extremely important. It's extremely important to know that these things can occur right here from our own community, from you. So, again, I thank you all and I am very appreciative of everything that you've all done. Thank you.
Now, we entertain our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda. First item is the February 25, 2025 City Commission Meeting Minutes. And the second is a resolution, Resolution 2025-17. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda if there's no objection.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the consent agenda, February 25, 2025 City Commission Meeting Minutes and Resolution 2025-17, Resolution of the City Commission, the city of Pahokee, Florida, accepting official results of the 2025 municipal election as canvassed and certified by Palm Beach County's Camden Board.
Our second.
It is moved by Commissioner Bolden and probably second by Commissioner Cowan Williams for the adoption of our consent agenda, which consists of the February 25, 2025 City Commission Meeting Minutes and a Resolution, Resolution 2025-17. Call for questions. Here in honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have our old business, city update, city commission, city manager.
Yes, sir. I have a few updates for the commission and the community tonight. I want to first start off by indicating that we continue to work directly with our state and federal lobbyists and Becker Law. And as late as yesterday, we received an update that both of the city projects are still making their way through the different committees. Actually, they're awaiting appointment to the Rules Committee. And one of the things that we were able to discuss that this legislative session is really different in so many ways. And it's causing the process to lag for about a week. Everything is pretty much running behind. So, it's anticipated by next week or, actually in week six, they anticipate. Session is scheduled to end May 2nd. But they anticipate committee assignments as early as next week. And just for informational purpose, I want to remind the commission and the community that we have two legislative requests. One is centered around restoration, it's a restoration project that we're seeking funding to demuck and backfill substantial municipal park design. And those parks are MLK Park and Citizen Village Park. And we're requesting $950,000, with $750,000 going towards capital outlay and $200,000 going towards operations. That's that one. And then the second one is funding for hurricane hardening for the Eddie Lee Roads Gymnasium. That project request is $2.5 million. And that, the purpose of the funds is to provide a secure shelter for local residents and visitors at the marina and campground during storm and hurricane activities. Given that the city of Pahokee has direct access to Lake Okochobee, the proposed hardening will create the city's only hurricane-proof shelter, ensuring safety and protection for the community in times of crisis. So, again, we'll continue to track those legislative requests. We're working directly with our Senator and Representative in Tallahassee. And just today, the portal opened for the And just today, the, the portal opened for the federal legislative request. So, we'll be working with our lobbyists on the federal end as well to, to gauge those, gauge, to define the projects on the federal level. This afternoon, we held a ZAP Board meeting. And the ZAP Board unanimously approved the amended site plans and variances for One North Lake. And just in a real short detail, summary of what took place there. The project was originally planned for forty units. And in order to get the necessary funding from HUD and other partners, namely the Palm Beach County, they requested, if you, if the, the owner and developer was seeking additional funds, they requested to have more units. So, and the, the change in the plans and the variances will allow now for fifty-four units. So, it was originally scheduled and planned for a three-floor project. It's now a four-story project that will have fifty-four units. And within the next thirty to forty-five days, plan should be submitted to start that proc, that process. So, we're excited about bringing downtown development in the form of One North Lake. Barfield Highway, we've worked over the last two and a half, three months in solidifying, solidifying the plans and overall engineering for the restart for Barfield Highway construction. The final orders was, has been completed. And we're now awaiting approval from FDOT to approve those final change orders. And it will be scheduled for the next commission meeting. And we'll, real briefly, those change orders will include minor concrete repairs, fill behind sidewalk, but also construction with lay additional asphalt as needed to close to planned slope as possible. So, all of the deviations you see now in, in the road, all of the issues with the unlevel manholes, all of that will be asphalt to, to, to plan. And we won't have those issues anymore. The adjust calls for striping due to price increases from the original contract. So, we'll have to add striping. We'll have to fix fire hydrants in four locations. And then there will be additional mobilization to, to make sure all of that happen. And I inadvertently heard a comment from, from the audience. She said, "When?" A lot of what you, a lot of what happens, you actually don't see it with, with your naked eye until the construction start. But it's, it's taken two months to restart this project, for lack of a better term. There was no construction or engineering inspection on the job for, for almost a year and a half, which means that the project could not technically move to completion before the engineering aspects were complete. There was a, a need to redesign some portions, the Barack Obama intersection with Barfield Highway. You can tell there's a, a lot of deviation, a lot of humps and bumps there. It took redesign efforts to do that. That required engineering intervention. We were able to do that, as you know, and we'll talk a little bit more about engaging cap engineering back in January. Since then, we've redone the plans. We've finalized everything to put it in a position to, if approved, next commission meeting. We've already agreed in contract, tentatively with Ranger Construction to start the asphalt lift on, on May 1st. So, we, we've been working. It's not, it's not a lot visible with the naked eye. But once the project starts back up in May, it's, it's anticipated it will be complete within four to five weeks. So, we're anxiously looking forward to that and making that a reality. I would also like to inform the commission and the community that a little over three weeks ago, the City of Pohoke began its exit interviews for two longstanding audits that have been in place for multiple years now. We're now in the process to respond from a management standpoint, the Office of Inspector General's audit. The response is due for that on Friday. We're on task to make sure that we respond to those preliminary findings. And the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, our response is due by the 26th of this month. And we're in line to make sure that we provide adequate responses to those audits. Once the response is received, there will be a period of review, and the final findings will come out. And when that happens, it'll be made available to the entire commission, the community at large, and anyone that has interest in, in taking a look at those audits. We are now preparing, on a staff standpoint, to begin audit preparations for fiscal year 2024 for the City of Pohoke. We look to start an engagement letter with the cities' auditors within the next week and a half, two weeks. Those are all the updates for now. I will go over more during the Resolution component.
We don't have any public hearings or ordinance. We do have several resolution. Our first resolution is Resolution 2025-18, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2025-18, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohoke, Florida, appointing a Vice Mayor pursuant to Article Two, Section Two, Point 04B of the City of Pohoke's Charter, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-18, the City of Pohoke's Charter indicates that the City Commission shall appoint a Vice Mayor from among the sitting Commissioners at the first regular meeting in April each year. The Vice Mayor serves in the absence of, or disability of the Mayor. Staff recommends passage of Resolution 2025-18.
City Commission, I know due to sunshine law, we don't talk to each other. But hopefully, you've been thinking about the position of Vice Mayor. Customarily, that don't mean we have to continue doing what we've done in the past, but customarily, we look at the most senior Commissioners who has been here the longest for consideration of that position. But we are individuals. We can decide however we wanna present and proceed with this. So...
I choose, Ms. Kylun.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Scott and properly seconded by Commissioner McPherson for the movement to, uh, appoint Commissioner Kylus Williams, the Vice Mayor. Call for questions on that. There are any questions? Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Kylun Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. At this time, I would like to congratulate Commissioner Kylus Williams on her appointment as the new Vice Mayor.
We'll now move to our next resolution, which is Resolution 2025-19, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohoke, Florida, updating the designation of the City of Pohoke's voting delegate and alternates to the Palm Beach County League of Cities, Inc., as set forth here to in Exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-19 takes into consideration the change on the City Commission and has caused the need to change the voting delegate and alternates to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. If passed, this resolution will establish the city's new updated designation of voting delegate and alternate. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-19.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, in the past, what we have done is elect the, appoint the Mayor to be the official voting delegate for the League of Cities, with the other Commissioners in alphabetical order being the alternate. Again, this is past practice. You don't have to follow past practice. If you choose to appoint another person to be the voting delegate, that's your choice as Commissioners. So, I entertain a motion to in effect.
Mayor Bab, I move that we accept Resolution 2025-19 with the Mayor Bab being the delegate, the voting delegate, and Commissioner Bolden being the alternate.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kylus Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden that the Mayor be appointed the voting delegate for the League of Cities with the Commissioner Bolden as an alternate. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote, Commissioner? I'm saying, uh, City Clerk?
For the record, we wanna notate that the motion came from Vice Mayor Colin Williams. We said Commissioner Colin Williams.
Okay.
And with the list, you want me to alter the list and just have the Mayor and Bolden? Or everyone else on the list as well?
What was the question?
You mentioned the Mayor and me. Do you wanna include everybody else?
On the list?
As it is on the list?
Oh, as alternates? Yes, we can, and, okay. So, you want me to redo the motion? Okay. Okay, so I move that Mayor Bab is the voting delegate. Commissioner Bolden is the first alternate. And then Vice Mayor St. Quaterkyle Mervid is the second. The third alternate, Commissioner Everett McPherson. The fourth alternate, Commissioner James Scott. Is that it?
Thank you.
Call for questions. Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll entertain Resolution 2025-20, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohoke, Florida, appointing a new member to the Pohoke Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill a vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term of Ronald Osborne, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-20, in accordance with State Statute 42105.05, the City Commission is required to fill any vacancy of the Pohoke Housing Authority within sixty days of any resignation of a board member. This proposed resolution complies with the statutory timeline. The current, the City currently has one application of interest for the Pohoke Housing Authority Boards of Commissioners. Staff recommends approval and naming of this new board member through Resolution 2025-20.
City Commission, normally, the Mayor appoints the board member for the Pohoke Housing Authority with the blessing and of the commission. And at this time, I will appoint the only applicant we do have on file, which I view the application, she appears to be strictly qualified for that position. Believe her name is Janice Williams?
Yes, Janice Williams.
Janice Williams. That would be my point. Have you, by just a vote or consensus, ratify that appointment?
Mayor Bab, I move that we accept Janice Williams as the nominee to be appointed to the Pohoke Housing Authority Board.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kylus Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden for the appointment by the Mayor of Janice Williams as a board member of the Pohoke Housing Authority. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll entertain Resolution 2025-21, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohoke, Florida, authorizing a six-month emergency agreement with Coastal Network Solutions LLC as set forth in Exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam, uh, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-21, the City of Pohoke originally established an agreement with Coastal Network Solutions LLC in April of 2022 as a provider for IT services, which included business technology consulting and support and overall troubleshooting services. Several administrative changes and periods of uncertainties over the original contract period yielded non-action for automatic renewal or negotiations, which essentially led to the expiration of the professional services contract. This contract officially expired in the first quarter of 2024. Section two, Section 2-272, 6A of the city's code states that "The City Commission may make emergency purchases to make, to meet a pressing need for the protection of the public health, safety, or welfare other than for regular or reoccurring requirements, upon signature of the City Clerk and approval of the majority of the City Commission in session. It is now necessary, proper, and recommended to reestablish contractual terms with Coastal Network Solutions LLC on a six-month emergency period until such time a full RFP, RFQ could be developed for the city's consideration. All the original terms under the initial contract remains unchanged to include scope of work and pricing." Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-21.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard Resolution 2025-21 properly read and to the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, what is your preference?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution 2025-21.
Are there a second?
I have a question. I know there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, let's do this second. Add the question.
I'll second it so we can have discussion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Commissioner Williams for the movement of Resolution 2025-21. Call for question, Commissioner McPherson.
I'm just, I'm just curious, is when did the contract actually end it?
It ended in March 2024.
That's it.
Okay.
I just have a question I wanna ask for the record. And I know I spoke with Comis, I mean, with City Manager Jackson today. I know, you know, when we've gotten our audit findings, it has been that we, um, wasn't following our procurement process. And he explained that we're able to do this. And I just wanna make sure, referring to the attorney, that we are able to do this and it won't come back to hunt us in an audit, that we're doing it as an emergency and then we're putting it out as an RFP.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that we're able to do this. And I did speak with the manager that it should be for a short period of time and a reasonable period. And the manager determined six months was appropriate and he could have it out on the street for an RFP. And at this point, it's done as an emergency because that is allowed under your code. And so, you all can proceed at this, at this time.
Okay. Any additional questions? Hearing and honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we'll entertain Resolution 2025-22, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pohoke, Florida, ratifying the City Manager's execution of time execution, extension number one to the state-funded grant agreement, Small County Outreach Program Scope. agreement Small County Outreach Program SCOPE with the State of Florida Department of Transportation FDOT for Contract G-2129 FM number four four eight one zero zero one five four dash oh one attached here to is Exhibit A extending the project completion deadline related to McClure Road from Palm Beach to Palm Road to South Lake Drive, providing for adoption of representations, providing for ineffective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-22, this, this resolution establishes a new time period for the state-funded grant agreement Small County Outreach Program SCOPE for the McClure Road project. The original agreement established June 2025 as the project completion deadline. The FDOT recently approved time extension sets a new project completion deadline for June 2026. Resolution 2025-22 ratifies this execution of time extended to the State of Florida for this project. This project is currently under design with approximately eighty percent complete. Just for clarification, again, this is a situation where I know I get a lot of calls, and I know the commission get a lot of calls. This project, the construction part of it is not began yet. It's eighty percent complete on the design. Once the design is complete, the project goes out for the construction bid, documents to be put in place, and then the city will hire a construction company to actually do the construction work. But up until then, the completion of the, the design, that process will not start. Again, I, I get quite a few calls about the condition of, of, of the road, the McClure Road, and it's, it's, they're real concerns, but until we finish this design phase, we won't be able to use the designs to go out for construction documents. The total project amount is estimated in October of 2021. Again, I think that's significant. It was estimated in 2021, four years ago. It was at 1.194 million with the City of Pahokee's cash contribution of $260,989. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-22.
I move that we accept Resolution, I move that we accept Resolution 2025-22.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pherson and properly second by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of Resolution 2025-22. Call for questions.
I have a question. Since we're at eighty percent on Mr. Jackson, and we're getting an extension, so we know we're going to be working with a timeline, do we know how long it's going to take with the company? Who's the company that has, that's doing the design? Do we know how long it's going to take before they do the other twenty percent?
The, the company that's doing the design, I had conversations with them as early as today. There were some outstanding invoices that needed to be paid. Those invoices have been paid, which now reengages them to complete the design component of the project.
Man, who is it you said?
WGI.
Oh, WGI.
Our estimation is to have the project to relaunch and restart within the next two to three weeks at the most. And the level of design that's needed to complete is only twenty percent, and that shouldn't take an extremely long period of time. An extension to June 2026 may seem like a long time, but it gives us the opportunity to complete the design again, and my ultimate goal is to recommend that the construction begin no later than June 2025, which gives us a year to complete the project.
Oh, okay. So you, okay, I see what you're saying. Got it.
Any additional questions? Hearing Honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we entertain Resolution 2025-23. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, amending the emergency agreement with CAP Engineering Inc. related to construction engineering and inspection CEI services in conjunction with the contract between the City of Pahokee and the State of Florida Department of Transportation FDOT, Contract Number G-1753 FM four four two zero three zero dash zero one dash five four dash one Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project, to increase the contract amount from fifty thousand dollars to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, providing for adoption of representations, providing for ineffective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2025-23 comports with the Barfield Highway Project. It amends the emergency agreement with CAP Engineering relating to construction engineering and inspection services as it pertains to that project. If approved, it increases, increases a dollar amount from fifty thousand to one hundred and twenty-five thousand. The scope of work for these services will remain the same as the original contract authorized under Resolution 2025-4, which includes construction management, documentation of construction activities, and project closeout. Staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, I entertain a motion for the adoption if this is desired the commission.
This engineering, I move that we accept Resolution 2025-23.
I'll second it for discussion.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pherson and properly second by Commissioner Kylers Williams for the movement of Resolution 2025-23. Call for questions, Commissioner Kylers.
Yeah, I have some questions, and I talked with City Manager in regards to this today. Did you bring the documents, City Manager, in regards to what we spent the fifty thousand dollars on already?
Yes.
Because we just approved this in January, and now we spoke about this, we're in April, and they're wanting an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, and what those seventy-five thousand dollars are going to cover. I see the prices and the rates that they have on the back, but that's to me is not enough information for me, that we're going to pay an additional seventy-five thousand dollars for services.
Point of clarification, Commissioner Cal, Vice Mayor Colin Williams, I get used to saying that. It's up to seventy-five thousand dollars. It's not saying that we're going to spend a total of seventy-five thousand. To date, we've spent roughly forty-eight thousand dollars. I brought it back to the commission because I know there's still some additional work that's needed to close the project out, and in project closeout, that amount would supersede the fifty thousand dollars that's already approved. So to stay within the procurement process, there's a need to increase the amount. I'm almost certain that it will not be an additional seventy-five thousand, but I put that amount to prevent from coming back to the commission every other commission meeting before project closeout. As I indicated earlier, this project had been dormant for some period of time, for eighteen-month period of time. It preceded me, years preceding me. I've been working since being here, but more importantly and more specifically, for the last three months, in getting this project back on, on task. And a big part of that, as I indicated earlier, was getting the engineering inspection services in place. And in doing so, over the last two and a half, three months, CAP Engineering has put the project in a position, from an engineering standpoint, to have complete closeout by the, by June 2025 of this year. I, I didn't get a chance to print out the detailed invoices today, and, but the scope of services is, will, is the items that they provide and that we are paying them for. Those scope of services are included in the original agreement and includes construction management. Under the construction management is construction administration, where they review and assess all previously submitted contract documents to date, such as permits, plans, and revisions, engineering reports, shop drawings, change orders, RFI's, payment application, time extensions, coordination with FDOT, and prepare reports and certifications as required. Task two, they're paid for, deals with monitoring. On-site inspections may vary based on actual construction activities, monthly review of construction progress, project meetings, we meet every week to discuss the project and the progress of the, of progress of the project, and their attendance is mandatory. Review and process contractors' applications for payment. Review and receive draft applications for payment prepared by the contractor to reconcile any discrepancies between engineers' estimate of progress and contractors' application. Review draft application for payment in comparison to measured or estimated quantities. Make notations of deficient work not recommended for payment until corrected. Return a copy of the review draft to the contractor. Review revised applications for payment, and if appropriately, advise the contractor to submit the required number of copies. Forward copies to the city's project managers for process. And then closeout, which is the substantial part of what's left to do in this particular contract. Substantial completion, when they receive and review, contractors require substantial completions, submittals, conduct substantial completion inspections. Speaks for itself, coordinate, conduct, and document substantial completion inspection. Final as-built record drawing review, the review, all as-built to make sure that they're verified to the contract drawings. Final completion, receiving and review the contractors' required final completion submittal, and final payment, they collect all payment documents required and forward to the city project manager for processing. We've, the last two and a half months, we've been doing primarily project closeout, and we're to a point now, as I mentioned earlier, that we'll bring the final change orders to the commission as the next commission meeting. Would have been on tonight's agenda, but we're awaiting approval from FDOT, which we did not receive in a timely manner to have it on tonight's agenda.
So I guess my question is, Mayor Bab, should we be approving this? Because this is money that we have to pay for, right? That this is coming out of the city general fund, and we have to pay for this, am I correct?
Yes.
And so I just don't feel comfortable approving that we're giving funding, which we, we got three point eight million dollars for this project, and we're now paying out of our pockets. I respect and I appreciate Mr. Jackson reading all the information, but I need to see the documents and what we're actually paying for, so that we, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that's not in front of me, that I know the project needs to be done, and I understand the community wants this project taken care of, but we've been paying and paying all along and doing all the change orders, and we still look what we've gotten. So I don't, I just think that we should not vote and pass this until we actually get the documents and the prices to see what it is that we're actually paying for.
Outside of providing you with a, a printout of the details of their invoices, which I don't think is in line, there's nothing else I can do. I provided all of the scope of services. That's what they're being paid for. Nothing else, nothing more.
They don't have any prices to go along with them? I understand that.
You have a price, you have a price range for each of their different professions as a part of this resolution.
And I saw that, but we don't know which one to connect with what, to know what we're totally paying for, for each of what you just read off. You did read a list of things off for us.
I, I'll, I'll say this, and I'll, I'll leave it to the commission to make their decision based on, this is, this project started and was actually authorized in 2019, authorized in 2019. This project fits the mold of most of the projects that we discuss here. They start, nothing happens for years, which causes increase in prices, which causes challenges with getting the contractors and the engineers all in place under one umbrella. It gets started, things happen, a lot of things have happened here. We had an eighteen-month period where nothing happened, even after the project started again. And you're at a position now where you're at the very end of a project, and the State of Florida has provided almost four million dollars to work on, to complete this project. And you'd have to have the inspections completed in order to have the project completed. We cannot complete the project without having engineering inspections. So unless and until you want to jeopardize the total project and find yourself in a position that you really don't want to be in with having to potentially pay back the State of Florida for not completing the project, I strongly recommend that you approve this and have this project completed.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Jackson. I'm not trying to make the same mistakes that has been made in the past because we've paid out money in the past, and the project is still not done. I get it. I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, as a commissioner, I don't feel comfortable that, to keep paying out money, and we're not seeing documents, and we've been given four point eight million dollars, and here it is now, we're having to spend our money on this project. I get it, we do need it, because at one point, we were told we had an engineer, then we came back, we didn't have an engineer, so if we didn't have an engineer, my question is, who were we actually paying to oversee the project as far as it has gotten?
Commit, Vice Mayor Colin Williams, your knowledge of the project is not where, is not representative in what you're saying. The, the information that you're suggesting is not accurate. You, you will not, the city will not, the city cannot pay for a service that they're not receiving. Every service that the city has paid for, the city has received it. Now, I can't speak on what happened ten months prior to me coming here, but from the time I've been here, I've had to resurrect this project. I've had to convince the contractors to come back to the table. I've had to convince the State of Florida to allow this project to continue. I've had to convince and work hard to get an inspection team in place to complete the project. So those are the things that you're up against. Outside of, again, seeing the details of invoices, I'm not sure what that will do for you and your request, but the city does not pay for any services that's not provided.
So you're saying if we don't approve this, the project can't move forward if we don't get the documentation of what it is that they're saying they're going to do for the up to fifty thousand dollars with a price attached to it? You're saying that we would be in trouble if, for ask, I mean, if we're wanting that documentation, you're saying we're not able to get the documentation for what they are going to be doing for us for the up to seventy-five thousand dollars?
No, I'm not saying that. I've already explained to you what they will be doing for us. It's in the scope of work. It's clear.
I'm just asking for in writing so that we can see it. I heard what you said. As a commissioner, I'm requesting to see it with the numbers attached to it. That's what I'm asking.
I, I don't understand what you're asking outside of what you already have, unless you, you're asking to see, unless you're asking to see individual line item invoices, which interferes directly with day-to-day operations when requesting that information.
The commission?
Let me finish. You have outlined in the agreement that you've already agreed to and approved for the fifty thousand dollars, and again, with the additional requests for up to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, the seventy-five thousand, not the fifty. I'm talking about the additional.
I can't show you something that they haven't done yet. I explained to you that they have not reached the fifty thousand dollar threshold from the original. I cannot provide details on something that has not happened.
So I guess I'm confused now. So what are you needing the additional money for if we haven't spent the fifty thousand dollars?
Okay. Without being repetitive, I indicated that we have spent forty-plus thousand dollars to date, and to prevent from overspending that original contract, I'm asking for additional funds to complete the project closeout, which I'm certain they're still working, and I'm sure at some point, an invoice will come in that will supersede the fifty thousand dollars. I'm trying to get in front of that to prevent the city from defaulting on the contract, the first one, and also be able to close the project out with the needed engineering services for this project closeout. If, if this, if this does not move, that means that the city at fifty thousand dollars will not have engine, engineering inspections to complete the project.
And you can't come back to us at that time once the fifty thousand dollars is spent, so they So they don't go over that? And so when we're done with those fifty thousand dollars, then you can come back to us with those documents itemized for us to see what it is now. It is up to the seventy-five thousand dollars that you want us to pay for is what I'm asking.
I don't know how many times I can say it and how differently I can say it. I cannot give you anything that hadn't been done yet. That's impossible. I can give you the scope of work and I can give you what they will be doing to earn those seventy-five thousand, up to seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't think it'll be seventy-five thousand, but again, to prevent from having to come back to the commission, every commission meeting, asking for an additional increase. I ask for that as a ceiling to allow the project to be completed. And I will, will remind you, this po- project is set to expire. The project completion is set to expire June of this year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So we don't have time, that's why it's considered an emergency. We don't have time to wait until an invoice come in, which will exceed fifty thousand dollars by the next invoice, based on their building. We don't have time to wait on an invoice and then come back and to present to the commission for consideration. We're on a very short time period, timeframe to complete this project. And again, this project began in twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen, and it's twenty twenty-five now. You're at the end of a process that will give you a brand-new road. And we're. Again, I, I recommend the commission approve this resolution so we can complete this project.
To move forward, we do have a resolution on the floor. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, which has been properly read into the minutes. Our city attorney.
You said twenty twenty-five, you said twenty-four. It's twenty twenty-five, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty-three, yes. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three has been properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager. What is your preference? We, we did the motion. And we in the discussion, okay. All right, are there in addition of questions on the resolution? Hurry and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
No.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bev?
Yes. Motion passed by a majority for one vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you commissioners. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, city attorney.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing payment to Momentum CEI LLC for services rendered in conjunction with the State of Florida Department of Transportation Contract G dash one seven five three FM number four four two zero three zero dash zero one dash five four dash one for the Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project, provided for adoption of representations, provided for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution alway- also deals with Barfield Highway. It's, if proposed, if it's passed as proposed, it authorized payment to Momentum CEI for construction engineering services for the Barfield Highway Construction Project as originally approved through resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eight and later amended by resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. The contract is no longer active. However, the company wasn't fully paid for its services totaling seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents, of which seventy-three thousand, one twenty-six point ninety-two cents was previously approved for payment by FDOT, leaving a balance of two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents to be paid by the City of Pahokee. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-four. And again, just for a little additional backup, yes, this is Barfield Highway and yes, this is construction engineering services. This was the original CEI engineer for the project that was, again, let back in twenty twenty-one. The, there was a need to increase the funds for engineering services. And the city recognized that and did so in twenty twenty-three. And extended the contract amounts. During that period, during those two resolution periods and contract periods, the city requested reimbursement for those services for CEI, Momentum CEI. And for whatever inadvertent reason or mistake or what, what have you, doing my working trying to reestablish the, the project, learned that this company was not paid for work that they had already been previously done in the amount of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. So I recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-four to be able to pay this contractor for work that was done in previous years.
And that's the balance, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we gotta pay two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And can you explain what that is for, Mr. Jackson, two thousand, one forty-eight?
Yes, ma'am. The two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. I began negotiations and beginning to discuss the possibility of bringing Momentum CEI back to the project during the time I was trying to get the project restarted. So we had a couple of meetings directly with CEI. Momentum CEI and the contractor and the state of Florida. And those meetings totaled two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. So that's the portion, the balance of, from the seventy-five that the city is, I'm asking the city to pay in that, in that regard.
And so when we deal with them in the future, are they gonna be charging us for meetings to meet with them and we're paying them for a service?
A, a part of developing contracts and a part of working with different partners and players to, for a contract of this magnitude. Whenever you meet with an engineering company, we kind of outline some of the scope that's included in engineering inspections. Meetings in two. Meetings are needed and required to review plans and to look at as-bills and to look at other things in terms of the contract, the site plan and everything associated with the overall construction and development of the highway. So those meetings, I think it was total of four, totaled to two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Again, it was an effort from the administration to get the project back up and running. We eventually went with a different company, which we just discussed with Cap Engineering. But this was an attempt back in September to get this company back and get things moving.
So the seventy-three thousand is gonna be paid by FDOT, correct?
It was already paid.
It's the balance.
Already paid, the city just never paid him.
Okay, and the two thousand, one forty-eight, that's just gonna come from our general funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, city commission having heard, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, properly read into the minutes by city attorney, properly explained by city manager. What is your preference?
Mayor Bev, I move to accept a resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner McPherson for the movement of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four. Call for questions. Hurry and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colin Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bev?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to new business presentation by city manager of activity of upcoming events, if any. First event is a discussion of the acquiring better city vehicles. This app came from Commissioner Bowden previously to add to the agenda for future agenda items. City manager, allow you to address this.
The discussion item?
Yes, as a highlight.
Okay. Okay, during our last commission meeting, Commissioner Bowden suggested that we bring this back to the commission to have a discussion around acquiring city vehicles, better city vehicles for, for the city. And so this item is here for discussion purposes, to get any direction from the commission, if any, in that vein. From a budget standpoint, this year's budget, as proposed and approved by the commission, includes one vehicle, one new or leased vehicle, and that's for the city manager. No other departments and no other requests or items were proposed for this year's budget. So there is one vehicle that's scheduled to be purchased this fiscal year. All of the others would have to come under a new proposed lease program that the commission can, can direct to do so.
And what was that amount for? Cause I'm trying to find.
I'm gonna have Commissioner Bowden, since he brought this up for discussion, to lead off in the discussion, but I wanna hear basically from every commissioner to see what their thoughts and ideas would be also. Commissioner Bowden?
Well, first I'll say, I'm, I'm happy to hear that we do have money in the budget for at least one vehicle. You know, branding and marketing is gonna be important. I think that, that's at least a start. And I'm assuming that also as part of that budget, that would include the Pahokee logo and branding as well.
Yes.
All right, to be included, okay. You know, I brought this up because, you know, we've, we've been to places where we've been transported by even previous city managers. And, you know, when you see other cities go out and represent their city with excellence, with a nice clean vehicle with their branding on it as, it is really kind of discouraging and, and a little embarrassing when we show up to places and, you know, ours is not up to that standard. That was the reason for me even bringing it up. And like I said, I'm happy to hear that we do have money in the budget for that. And I think one vehicle is, is a good start for us.
Commissioners.
I'm sorry.
I'm just looking for, how much money did we have in that? Cause I'm just looking for in the budget.
It's twenty thousand dollars.
That was up under where, that was up under where in the budget?
I'll, I'll, I'll get it, I'll pull it up for you in a minute directly and, and get it and let you know.
It's twenty thousand dollars for the vehicle?
Yes. For the, for the.
Twenty thousand dollars for a vehicle?
Yes.
And the logo and everything, twenty thousand?
Yes, for a leased vehicle, we're not buying one, for a lease. Yes. Okay, the way that it works, if you, if you enter to a lease program, every other, every other year, every third year, you can.
I understand how a lease go, but I won't agree with you, but I understand, I understand.
Okay.
Commissioner Scott, I'm gonna start with you as far as your input or your.
I, I. I would never vote for that. Cause if this vehicle starts up and it make back and forth and work, it's okay. I'm concerned about, I'm not concerned about how his vehicle look, more than I'm concerned about the roads that these others have to drive their cars down and tell every day. And I'm worried about how his car look, not me. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Williams, Vice Mayor.
Well, I mean, my concern is, we were supposed to have a workshop to talk about the vehicle policies and now we're talking about buying vehicles. I mean, I don't, I mean, I, the vehicle is working and I get it. They probably wanna, you know, image, your city manager have a certain image, they in a certain vehicle. I understand, I get it. But right now, we're spending our money for roads that we have to pay money for. And I, I just don't see how we can afford that right now. I think we can use that money on roads. I don't know if that's money came, is that money came from general funds or is this money came from somewhere else for the vehicle?
The vehicle that we're talking about was approved by the commission. It's already in the budget for the purchase of or lease of a vehicle.
It was approved when?
It was approved prior to, it was approved for last, for this fiscal year. So during the last budget cycle, the commission approved the budget unanimously.
And it said a vehicle on there? Cause I'm looking, I didn't see vehicle.
Yes, it's, it's, it was stated, it was explicitly outlined in the budget information that you received.
Well, I'm looking for that, I don't see it. And what, what department is it up under?
I'll, I'll find it for you in a minute, Commissioner. I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I'll, I'll find it for you in a minute. And again, for the last ten months, I've been driving the vehicle that was, was afforded and given to me. I have not complained about the vehicle. Is it, is it in need of a new one or a different one? Absolutely, absolutely. And, and as Commissioner Bowden mentioned a minute ago, it's not about my image. It's about what's represented by the city. When I go to meetings, I drive around in a, in a vehicle that has, that's not desirable, for lack of a better term. So much, so much so, when I go to meetings out of town, I drive my own personal vehicle. Yes?
Do you have an option to drive any vehicle in the city?
Do I have an option to drive any vehicle in the city?
You own vehicles, right?
Yes, but.
So you can drive any vehicle in the city? Cause I see some nice ones parked right out here at recreation every day.
But that's, that's not the. That's not the point, Commissioner.
It's not?
No, the point is that those, those, each department has vehicles assigned to them. The city commission, the city manager through contract has a, a vehicle assigned to him.
I'm aware of it.
Okay, I have a vehicle and I have not complained about the vehicle, but the vehicle is not desirable.
I, I understand.
Okay.
But I'm saying some nice ones parked outside here. So just switch with somebody out here and I seen some nice vehicles parked out there. And I'm saying, we, we, we just grab one of those and we move on. Cause I can't see me voting for you, like anyone else get a new vehicle. When I ride down these streets and they are ragged, there, there is no way.
So I'm gonna move it on down. I had Commissioner Vice Mayor Williams speak, Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Bowden. I'll just say this, I know our infrastructure is really bad and we do need to put a lot of effort in whatever we can to improve our road condition. I looked at it, first request as like a fleet addition of vehicle, at least more than one. And I had some concern about that. But this particular request now that just being brought before us would be for the city manager, which his contract include a proper operating vehicle. So we're really obligated by contract, whether to lease it or to purchase it is a question. We can decide if we choose to do it between the two. But we have an obligation to fulfill his contract and it does inquire.
Providing with the vehicle. So you can provide with the vehicle.
Yeah.
Then you say you had to get a brand new, we just say providing with the vehicle.
So who asked the question? So in essence, we agreed to put this in the budget, not to use it in the budget. So I don't, I don't understand how we budget for something and we have the money assigned for that and we don't use the money that we have in the budget for it. As far as roads go, many of us, quite a few of us have been in the county commission meetings and discussed this with, you know, all stakeholders. They're not gonna, the, the, the states have issues, the counties have issues with roads. We've been told that that's gonna be a really tough ask to get money for the roads. We've been told that. I think we need to look into coal packs to, you know, fix the, you know, fix the patches in the road. I think that's the option right now to get us by, but that's not the topic of discussion. The topic of discussion is a vehicle that is budgeted for, that can potentially be leased and wherever it is driven by the city manager to meetings or whatnot. It's, it's, it represents a particular standard that every, you know, functioning city that's actually doing well has. It's, it's, I don't see it as a big deal, since, especially since we've budgeted for that.
Commissioner McPherson, any input?
Maybe we don't care about our image.
Yes, I agree that we may need to purchase a vehicle, but not at this time. And I would say, you know, we have a lot of projects that we're working on and we never know when we gonna need funding because we constantly working on projects that we have received funding for. But we yet still having to, because of lack of better term of completing those projects timely. We are taking money out of our budget now to spend money on those things. Now at a later date, we can might can revisit this, but right now, I don't think. So our priority should be our image of our city. And I'm not talking about going out, I'm talking about when people actually come through our city and our roads and, and we need to concentrate on getting those things. More so than the vehicle. And I'm not saying not, maybe not purchase one in the future, but, and I'm not, I'm not for leasing one either. I would rather purchase one, but not right now.
So I guess at some point, we're gonna amend the budget to take the twenty thousand dollars out of that particular line item. That's not gonna fix the roads in Pahokee.
It's more than twenty thousand.
How much did you say it was?
Just down, you gonna pay a monthly payment.
Yeah.
You guys, I guess it's some things that you really don't understand and I, I understand that. But there are opportunities to lease vehicles, as the mayor indicated, of the seats, of fleet of vehicles if funding is in place. And you have companies that do that on a continuous basis with cities all across the country. They have leasing programs that will allow you to lease city municipal vehicles at a cost that will also allow you to change that lease in, in three years and start over again. It's a lot less expensive over time versus purchasing vehicles. So that was the reason and recommendation and rationale behind leasing a vehicle. And, and that's, it's not like you're going to a car lot asking for a lease for a vehicle. There, there are different programs and different opportunities that's specifically outlined for municipal leasing.
So you saying, so we're gonna, so let me just ask the question, the twenty thousand dollars is what you're saying, all you're going to spend on the lease? You're only gonna spend twenty thousand dollars?
I won't spend twenty thousand dollars.
In three years, in three years?
That was allocated for this fiscal year. We're approaching the third quarter of this year, which means that the twenty thousand dollars will not be utilized in, in totality.
So do you have any quotes where you've checked on leases and how much it's going to be monthly?
Yes, that's the rationale and justification for action for the twenty thousand dollars.
So I'm saying, you have some quotes that we can look at that you've gotten to see what the, what the monthly payment would be?
Once, once, if you go into contract, I'll be able to give you that detail. I can't give you that, I can't give that to you now because we have not entered into a contract.
So that's what I'm saying, well, again, we gotta vote on it and give authority and then we'll find out after the fact. See, that's what I, see, I like to see ahead of time.
Well, certain things you can't see ahead of time if it hadn't been done.
If you go into a car lot right now and say, hey, I'm interested in this car, they will give you and say, hey, this is what a possibility of, or what your monthly payment may be. You may not sign a contract, but they can give you an idea of about how much you would be paying. They would give you something in writing.
Just, just emphasize now, this is not gonna be a vote tonight. What would happen based on our discussion of this item? He would bring back a resolution or a lease contract or whatever need to be to move it forward and then we would vote on it. But he's getting our direction, whether or not we're gonna be able to move this forward, whether lease or purchase. We do have again, in the contract, a, a, a vehicle for the city manager. So we can, we can work from that point, whether or not we wanna move it forward or not.
What do you mean, there won't be a vote? We would have to vote whether we wanna move forward or not, just a discussion, don't allow to bring a resolution back, does it? And I guess my question is, we have, okay, his vehicle, we saying we need, he need a vehicle. So my question is, his contract says, yes, we have to provide him with a vehicle. But we have nice vehicles in parking recreation. So I guess my question is, one of those vehicles cannot be switched for the city manager because it is a nicer, more nicer of a vehicle and he gets that vehicle and give that vehicle he's in to parks and recreation or to whatever department that has a better car, because we're supposed to provide him with a car. That's all that I'm asking versus opposed to.
Yeah, we able to do that if that's gonna be the decision of the consensus of the city commission to do that. Yeah, that would be fine, we're able to do that.
I'm just asking.
I know it's been referenced a couple of times that other departments have vehicles that look better. Most of the city's vehicles, only from an insurance standpoint, is reaching the age of not being insurable because of age and overall condition. So the, the vehicles that you're referring to, they're very soon to not be able to even be able to be on the city's insurance. They may look better, but they're aged and you have to consider everything. And I personally wouldn't want to go in and switch a vehicle if it's undesirable for and inefficient for me to drive. I feel the same way it's inefficient for someone else to drive, whether it's in parking recreations or public utilities. It's just to switch vehicles to, from one department and another, doesn't fix the problem. The city still needs vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I can just read the paragraph and question, just to frame y'all's discussion, so you'll know what the contract calls for with the manager. The city manager's duties require exclusive use of a vehicle to be mutually agreed upon as provided to the manager at the employee's cost, at the employer's cost. It shall be agreed upon whether the vehicle is purchased, leased, or provided by a monthly allowance to the manager by the employer. City manager shall be reimbursed for reasonable documented travel and lodging expenses incurred while conducting business on behalf of the city outside of Palm Beach County, Miami-Dade County, and prior counties, and after approval by the city commission. So that's the section that deals with the vehicles, just so that you, so it does talk about exclusive use. So it can't be something that's in the, you know, fleet that he's using. And it does talk about.
You said exclusive, I thought when we did the contract, we took that exclusive use out.
Now unless I'm looking at.
Yeah, you're looking at a different one, cause we took that out. That was one of our big discussion, exclusive use.
I'm looking at a, at one dated one twenty-five. It's not a resolution, it's just one that was in my computer.
That was a big discussion we had with that.
So it's section sixty, so the clerk will pull it up for you. But I just wanted to, while you all are talking about it, just frame it so that you'll know what the contract call, what the, what the requirement is.
So pretty much he can use the vehicle in Palm Beach County and if he goes out of town, he just submit his, and it's approved. He just submit, we have to, he can, we reimburse him for whatever it is that, you know, if he rented a vehicle outside of Palm Beach County, pretty much is what it's saying.
Well, he, he has the use of a vehicle as the manager. So you all, that's a part of his contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so the clerk will pull up the language just to make sure. Oh, she doesn't have it. Yeah, so I haven't been able to get on the internet, so I was using a document that I had in my computer. And, and the clerk's not able to get on the internet right now. But that's what, you know, that's the most recent one that I have in my computer. So she can let you know if she's able to get on in a little bit. And maybe when you have it come back before you, we'll make the resolution format consistent with whatever the contract requires. So whatever's brought back, I think the mayor is just trying to get a, and get a, because there's language where you have to agree. Right, I think the mayor is just trying to get some consensus so we'll know what to bring back. But we'll make sure whatever it is is consistent with the agreement. Excuse my voice tonight.
I, I, I understand something, so I don't have people in front of me to explain this. So what I'm saying, asking is, you saying that we have to provide him with a vehicle?
That was a part of the contract, yes, sir.
I have no problem with that, I have no problem with that. But do it have to be a certain vehicle, do it have to be a two thousand twenty-five?
No, it does not.
Okay, I got you. So we can go out and purchase it. I think two thousand twenty, like. I got you, I understand. I, I, I like to, like, honor the contract, we give him a vehicle. But I just feel like right now that we do have other stuff that we need to get done before we worry about his image.
It's not his image, it's Pahokee's.
Okay, we worried about Pahokee and jerseys on up, we ain't worried about Pahokee.
Well, your image is not just in the city, your image is outside of the city. But I, I, I understand y'all's position. I understand y'all's position.
Well, I, I, I'm, my, I worry about Pahokee when I ride down Pahokee Street. That's what I'm worried about, I'm not worried about Mr. Jackson. I seen Mr. Jackson in his truck, nice jersey. So, you know, I don't like worry about that, he represent a way, so I'm not worried about that.
Okay, base, based on our discussion, I would entertain a motion so we can come up with a consensus from this commission, what are we planning on doing as far as the city manager's vehicle? Whether we planning on going out, say, purchasing a vehicle at a certain amount, certain year? We can do that if we so choose it, but we need to at least put it out front so we can move it forward.
So what's wrong with the, so you're saying he can't use the vehicle that he has now? Is that what we're saying? He can't use that vehicle? We're providing him with a vehicle, but we can't, he can't use it?
Yeah, I don't think anything preventing him from using that. Now, it just at a certain point, it's not gonna be able to be insured. Based on what he's letting us know, it's, it's gonna be insurable. So we, we may be able to be in a better position, since we already have twenty thousand in this budget adopted towards a vehicle. We may be able to be able to use that and move it for.
So let me ask the question, how old do the vehicles have to be for the insurance to stop putting them on it?
And I think it's like five years, but I'm not wanting to ensure that's something I said the manager have to, or someone have to look into with insurance.
So they stop at, after vehicles five years old, they don't, they don't.
Would you was able to get a date on when or the, the length of years it would have to leave it for if it come insurable?
Yes, but I don't have that with me. It's a part of the insurance policy and plan that outlines every year, you have to go through the insurance. You have to do a survey of all of the equipment, including vehicles. And just this past time, I think it took four vehicles off of the list of being uninsurable because of the age and overall condition. I wanted to get back to Vice Mayor Colin Williams and the others that may be interested. The adopted budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is under non-departmental and the object number is three, four, nine, and it's delineated as leased vehicles. And the adopted budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is twenty thousand dollars.
And so the four vehicles that they took off, that mean we're gonna need vehicles to, so that mean the twenty thousand dollars can go towards some of those as well? Since they've taken, I didn't know that now that he just told us that. So that mean we're gonna need, so Mr. Jackson, those four, so, since they've taken those off and we have the twenty thousand dollars, so I guess that's gonna be a department that's short as well, correct?
Just for memory, I think three of the four were not being used. It was just purging the, the inventory list. So those three of the four were not operational or not in use. But I can't speak on the third one. I will tell you, and we're talking, the agenda item came up for city vehicles. I'm not sure how it deviated to the city manager's vehicles. But the city overall is in need of vehicles and equipment. I'm, I'm sure you all know that.
Yeah.
But I've been talking with potential, potential companies to see if we could, if they were in, in the, in the process of surplusing or making vehicles available that the city could utilize through a partnership. I have not gotten any responses back yet. But I just recently, just last week, during the department heads meeting, I asked all the department heads to give me a, a list of equipment and vehicles that they, if, if Christmas was tomorrow, what would be on their wish list for vehicles to, to fully and functionally operate as a department? And I, I received from Public Works a list, a very long list. And just without going into a whole lot of detail, a Public Works department is not adequately equipped to function as a full servicing Public Works department. Bush hog don't have trailers to the degree that we need them. We don't have working dump trucks. We don't have, almost everything that's Public Works one-on-one in terms of equipment and vehicles does not exist here. So there's a need, and I know there's a lot of needs, but I would not, I could not properly represent staff by saying and not reiterating the need to have staff to have the equipment that they need to work and operate. I cannot, in my right mind, and I've already asked Public Works, what can we do in the meantime of getting, just some mall or some cold patch, as was referenced a minute ago, to put on some of the streets that we, it's Jackson, we don't have the equipment. So I was, I was to a point, one time I said, well, put it on the back of your pickup truck. But that is unreasonable and you cannot get what's needed. And I'm not saying that it's anyone's fault, but it, it is what it is. We need a lot. And from a priority standpoint, you're gonna help determine what that priority is. But there's a need to have city vehicles throughout the city. And again, I've been here for ten months and I've driven that vehicle and it gets me from point A to point B. But is it something that, that needs to be changed? Absolutely. But I don't get up and come to work every morning thinking about a vehicle. I, I come and I get, do what I can to make sure the city is, is working at its best. So if, if this commission desire or decides that the manager keep the vehicle that he has, I'll keep the vehicle that I have. I work on, I work at your discretion. But I will tell you that it's not representative of my position and my work that I do here on a daily basis.
With lack of a motion of any sort to move it forward, this was on the agenda for discussion. We're discussing, it seemed like the sentiment and I don't see a consensus where we are voting, but it appears that the consensus would be not at this time. And we will work diligent that we can to find some solution to ensure that the city manager has a proper operating and presentable vehicle to not only present himself, but present and represent the city when he go out and about throughout the county and state. So well, that's something we'll need to look at real seriously to make some final decision on. But we have discussed it, it was added to the agenda for that means. So we're gonna move on if there's no objection from the commission.
Can I just add one statement? The city manager just brought up some things about with, with Public Work. If we can get pressure washers and back hose and those type of things to help beautify our city, I'd be more apt to do that if the work is gonna be done than help beautify our city. Now, I'll be more than willing to move in that direction.
Okay, the number two discussion is of the recognition of student, recognizing students who have made all fives on last year. Colin Williams brought that up for discussion to be put on the agenda for the future meetings. And here it is now. So I have her lead the discussion on what is she's looking to have done and see if she have a consensus or support of the commission to move it forward. Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
What I wanted to do, the students from Canal Point, Pahokee Elementary, Pahokee Middle, and Pahokee High School. We have students that made all fives in areas where they were, that they were test, that they tested in. And I wanted to. And, um, I wanted to, um, for the sake of funding, we had some donations. And so I wanted to brainstorm with the commission to see what did they think of the idea since we have a lack of funds, but we do have where some people donated. Um, I think we have a little bit under five hundred dollars, Mr. Jackson, I think it is. And so I was thinking then, so it wouldn't cost the city money if we can give each student a proclamation and give each of those students, um, it's probably about ten students. It's not a lot of students that made all fives in every area where they were, that test. So we had about maybe ten students, and I was thinking with the five hundred doll, under the five hundred dollars that we have, maybe if we can do like maybe a little, um, um, buy some subs or do something for them and their parents in Parks and Recreation, and then leave from Parks and Recreation and come over here, um, to the commission meeting and get a proclamation from the, um, city. And I was thinking about maybe doing it in May, cause we wanna have enough, maybe the second meeting in May, cause we wanna have enough time to, um, invite the principals and invite their parents, and so that they all can have enough time, and then the clerk will have enough time, um, where, um, we can make sure that all the proclamations are done, and that'll give us about thirty, about thirty to forty-five days to get that done. Instead, since we were gonna try to use the funding that we do have. Maybe do some subs, sandwiches, cookies, and chips, and then, you know, they, everyone can mix and mingle, invite their principals, invite the regional team to come out as well as, um, Marsha Andrews, and, you know, congratulate them, and then we, after that, we transition over to the, um, commission meeting, give them all a proclamation.
I think because of the cost, we should be able to do that without a real issue or hardship on the budget or anything gets to that floor. So if you would move that in a motion, we'll get a second and see if the commission will approve that, which I think.
So you're saying to use the five hundred dollars, cause we, cause I.
Not when I say five hundred, you have to use up till whatever you need, up till five hundred.
Okay, so if we sent, so that was what, for that, so let me just ask a question there. So how do we feel about making sure that they all maybe get a trophy or something, or do we wanna just stick with the proclamation? Or then that gets to be too costly.
I would put it this way, you have a budget up to five hundred, so if a trophy can be included, which I think it should be able to do.
Not and feed the families?
You're doing sandwiches?
Yeah, okay.
Punching whatever cookies?
Okay.
I mean, unless you're trying to get the labyrinth.
No.
You got five hundred dollar budget. I'm just asking you to put it in a motion.
Okay, I move that we, um, are able to spend up to five hundred dollars for recognizing the students that made all fives at the, um, local elementary, middle, and high school.
Sick.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Williams and proper second by Commissioner McTheerson that we utilize the funding that has already been generated up to five hundred dollars to, uh, recognize the students who have scored a five in last year, uh, testing rating. Call for question. Ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McTheerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bass?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we're gonna move into the mayor report. I know it's getting a little late, so we're gonna be really quick. Uh, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate our newly elected, uh, city commissioner, James Scott, on his win and being the new, uh, city commission. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you. We know you have a lot of expertise in a lot of different areas, and we certainly wanna integrate that into the city as we move our city, uh, forward. Also wanna congratulate Commissioner Bolden for his reelection running unopposed, which is an awesome, awesome, uh, task to do. And I also will personally congratulate myself as being elected, uh, the mayor for another three-year term. Also, just wanna thank the public for your support and your past, uh, uh, support. Uh, we have a lot to do this year. We have a new city manager. We need to set new goals and new direction. I'm hoping very soon we'll determine a date for our State of the City address so we can set our vision of what we're gonna be doing this year coming, uh, up. I also wanna thank my wife for being here, supporting me as she always do. I look at us like the bombers. You get two for one, you know, the mayor and the first lady. So I thank her for her support and all that she have done, uh, to support me. I'd like to see us do some things that would help generate some funds for our city. I talked about one time, uh, doing log cabinets on the marina. Where they can be rented out. We got folks that live here, Pahokee and in the Glades, that never been able to have an RV to go up and just spend the weekend. Here, if you have log cabinets, which is gonna have some initial costs, you have to purchase them, but it gonna generate some income and some money that the city can put in its general funds. Also, it would provide some jobs. Uh, someone would have to clean those areas when they are, are lived in. So little housekeeping, uh, uh, jobs or whatever. So I'm just looking that we'll be able to do that. Also, and I think we all got a lot of ideas we wanna see done, and hopefully a part of the State of, uh, uh, City Address will kinda address some of those. Uh, amphitheater, right on the deck, and that can be rented. It can also provide entertainment and activities for us, uh, concerts and shows and whatever we'll need to do. Uh, another thing hopefully we can build is a, uh, uh, like a conference room. When I say a conference room, similar to what, uh, Belgrade has, I think the Lamar, Lamar Hare provision or whatever they have there is enclosed where you can have dances and activities on the lake that can be rented out in addition to having our only major rental. It's a gem for a big space. We can utilize that if we can get it built. Just things like that. So I'm looking for everybody coming up with some ideas that could give the city manager some thought on what direction you'd like to see this city, uh, take. How can we accomplish that? We know we have some serious issue with our infrastructure. We got to find a way that for funding. And, and, and immediate solution would be, we talked about the cold patching. If we have to, uh, contract with a company just to patch our roads to a certain point where you don't have to dodge uh, holes and potholes. And we're being sued in some instances, uh, people are putting in claims that their vehicle is being damaged by the roads that we have in our, uh, community. So we submitted to our insurance, data determined based on the information that was provided, whether or not that could be covered in any way. But that's a liability, just the roads itself, and our infrastructure is, uh, falling apart. So we just have to find a way to really try to, uh, address that. The city mayors of each of the three cities have one day that they can utilize Dollar Hand, uh, Culture Center. I wanna do ours for a, uh, State of the City Address where we can even have maybe a dinner, uh, and we would have to charge a minimum price to cover the cost of that. But that's what I'm looking to utilize my one day, uh, to have that event so it'd have some real impact on our community. Uh, so I'm looking to do that very shortly. But I'm gonna have the city manager, if he would, by at least our next commission meeting, you know, establish a date that he want to, uh, have the State of the City address. And also I just wanna keep, continue to encourage us to do quarterly, uh, town hall meeting. So we can provide updates and address any concerns from the, uh, community. And we'll be able to answer questions during those town halls too, something we're not able to do here at our general meeting. And lastly, I just wanna thank each of you all for being here. I know we had a newly elected commission come on board. We honored, uh, Coach Osman with a proclamation that may have brought the addition of people. But it's good to see our residents here face to face. I know we have, uh, live streaming, so you don't always have to be here live. But it's good to see that you're here in concern about our city. And we wanna make sure we address some of those concerns that you are having. We're working. We have five new peoples here now. Uh, Commissioner Bolden just finished his, uh, first year turn, first term, and now is on his second term. We have two commissioners that finished and completed their first year. And then we have our new commissioner, James Scott, who's now newly elected in his first year. So we're eager to roll up our sleeve and do what it take to make this city proud. So thank you. Next, we'll move to our city manager for his city report.
Yes, sir. I have a, a few things, and, and I'll start on, in response to some of the, some of your comments. Uh, I had not shared it with the, the commission, uh, today, but my thinking was to have the State of the City address, um, shortly after the end of the legislative session. Uh, it's scheduled in May second. If it ends May second, probably the week following, we could schedule and have the State of the City or, and/or a quarterly town home, town, um, town meeting. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it to your discretion for the commission to finalize those dates. But if you can start looking at dates, the second week of May for the State of the City address. And we'll, uh, I'll ask the clerk to send out a, a survey to see your availabilities for that week. Also, would it, to, along the lines that you were talking about, overall development and, and creating opportunities for, for development. Just this last couple, two to three weeks, I met with existing staff and, um, through our, um, staff here in the city, and we're, we have quotes in place now to add ten additional camp sites, um, to be ready and prepared for use within the next two and a half, three weeks. So we'll add ten, I think I talked about this a couple of months ago. We'll add ten now. And then we'll continue to work as, develop, revenue is developed and retained from those ten and additional, we'll do ten more, and we'll do ten until we have them all, uh, ready and available. So that's, that's real good news. We'll have ten additional, uh, campsites already within the next couple of weeks, if all goes well. Um, at recent hires in the city of Pahokee, this, this week, we've, uh, hired, uh, in Parks and Recreation and, and, and Public Works. Parks and Recreation, I think, have hired one and scheduled with an additional one to start this week. And then Public Works, we have two, uh, new employees in Public Works. So they'll increase our opportunities to do, do a lot more in those departments. I have, I have, uh, had conversations with, I think it's a total of three different, uh, companies that offer log cabins as an option, uh, for placement and utilization at the marina. I'll, I'll bring back those, um, and maybe have an opportunity to have one or two to present at a not-too-distant future commission meeting, uh, to allow you to, uh, look at what's available and what's possible. I know there were, in the, in past years, there were, uh, cabins there. But there's an opportunity to do that al- almost immediately as well. And, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to share something with you that was, is pretty much continues a, a theme that I, I'm running against, and I'm not complaining at all, but I'm just, uh, letting you know that, there's, there's a lot in, um, moving the city to the point where we all would like it to be. Uh, I mentioned earlier when I was doing my updates that almost every project that I run across, it's, it's behind. Uh, it's, um, delayed for a lot of different reasons. But I, just this past two weeks, uh, had a prime example of, of what that means and how, how important it is to reestablish relationships and work on developing, um, new relationships where opportunities exist. The, the original, uh, East Lake Stormwater Improvement Project started, uh, the notice to proceed started in twenty eighteen. Uh, the project was eventually put out to bed in twenty twenty-one. So it was approved in eighteen, it was put out in twenty twenty-one. So between the approval in twenty eighteen and the next three years, nothing happened with the project.
Wow.
And it was eventually completed in twenty twenty-three. But the city never requested for full reimbursement until two, until two weeks ago. So there was, there was in excess of six hundred thousand dollars left for a project that was eventually completed in twenty twenty-three, and no one reimbursed for it. Staff and I reimbursed for it two week, two week, two and a half weeks ago. And as of this morning, we're very sure, almost a hundred percent sure, that the city will receive those dollars. But what that took, that took be having to go back and reinstitute and reestablish relationships with D E, D E P, which originally had reservations about even having conversations. Um, and it took staff to find documents, and those documents that we didn't have, I embarrassingly had to call the state and ask them to give us something that we submitted to them at some point. But that's, just gives you an idea of the level of need that we have and the level of neglect, for lack of a better term. And it's, it's something that I do every day. For the last ten months, I have not initiated any of my initiatives. I've been putting out fires every single day. Am I complaining? No, because I know it's needed and necessary. I, I, I not only work for, for the commission, but I work for the people that I've, I've developed relationships in the city of Pahokee with. I work for them just as hard, because they are deserving and they need. But I, I just don't want the impression to be that nothing has been done here in the city. And we don't have staff to do the things that's needed and necessary. We do, it's gonna take time to reestablish, to rebuild, to reconstruct our relationships and other things to make the city what it deserves and need to be. So I just wanted to give you that example of the daily, uh, challenges that we have here with the staff. We have a very limited staff, but we have staff that's very, very knowledgeable. And then we have some, some situations where there are some lacking staff. But my encouragement is to build everyone up, and we, we meet, we, we meet monthly now to develop the skills and talents that's needed and necessary to move the city forward. So I, I, I appreciate your support. Uh, when I, when I bring things to you, I don't bring them lightly. They've been vetted, they've been looked at legally. So you won't get anything half-baked when I bring it to you. It's gonna be very detailed and well thought out. That's, that's the level of professionalism and, and, and attitude I have in presenting things for the city.
That concludes your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, City Manager. I would move to the report of the city attorney, if any.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to congratulate you and, um, Commissioner Bolden, and also, um, new Commissioner Scott. We've had some training sessions, um, and he is very eager to get to work, and I appreciate his time with that. And I'd also like to, um, congratulate the new Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams.
Thank you.
And, uh, and too, I won't leave you out, Commissioner McTheerson, on completing more than a year of service as city commissioners. But, um, I just wanna say that, you know, some of the things you all have been talking about tonight are kinda heavy kinda things, and, and about infrastructure and the need to, um, have infrastructure improvements. But I want you to know that you're not alone in having those conversations. These conversations are being held. These conversations are being held with many, many other municipalities throughout the state. And, and there is a lack of funding that's coming down, it's not what it used to be. And so a lot of cities are talking about, you know, just how, how do they move forward to do some of these things? And so I know, you know, sometimes when residents may listen to the discussions here, it may be sound very daunting and, and like it's just Pahokee, but just for whatever it's worth. No, it's not just Pahokee. But with that, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. And we'll move to future agenda items of the commission, if any. Let me start with Commissioner Mike Fearsom. If any item you'd like to see on the agenda at some point in the future.
Yes, one of the issues I've ran across, as a matter of fact, the swimming pool that's up there on the campground, there have been at least over the last month or two, three occasions where I ran children, some children out of there that was in there swimming illegally. And my concern is, you know, a liability if something ever, ever happens. And what I would like to put on the agenda, look at purchasing some type of security enhancement that we can do that illegally. Now, the thing about it, I felt bad running the kids out, because they really don't have, as far as that was type of recreation, they don't have anything to do. But we got to come up with a plan to do that, but that's another issue. Just the agenda item, maybe we can enhance the security up there. And, I mean, kids, I didn't call the sheriff or anything on them, I just talked to them and had the kids and they, they left. And that, that's within the last month, three times that I.
So you know it was reported, though it is a good thing.
Other people probably seen it.
Looking for their safety more than anything.
Yeah, well, that's what I told them.
But if one of them drowned up there.
This is a liability.
Accident, yes it is, right? And their parents need to know.
Yes.
We share that with them as much as possible. But the, 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 the county deputy did went and intervened for, on our behalf, the city manager made sure that, that was done.
Well, I didn't, reported to me and everybody. But I went up, I went and talked to the kids myself, and they vacated the pool. But I would like for us to put on the agenda as far as putting some other security gating or something. We need to probably do that ASAP. If, if possible, we can find the funding somewhere to do that.
Yes, sir. Just, just, just for informational purposes, I've had conversations with Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams as well. And certain parts of the year, spring break, approaching summer, it, it's a lot worse than normal. I've, I received two quotes, maybe about four or five months ago, to raise the, the height of the fencing. And I've called maybe every other week since then, and the companies always scheduled to come. And the date they were, they're scheduled to come, something happens, they can't come. And then some just flatly refuse to come to Pahokee because it's so isolated. They don't provide services, and I'm sure you all have heard that. Ideally, if we could find someone locally, I didn't look locally to see if that skill set was in place. And, and I will do that to see if we can get quotes or interest from someone locally to do it. But I, I've had two different quotes to enhance the security there. The equipment, and I know there's conversations about potentially having personnel, human.
That was my next.
Yeah.
And actually, that would probably help, having somebody there that, excuse me, available for even campers that are coming in and out too, so.
Thank you.
And the other thing I would like to put on, where, where are we with vacancies as far as, you know, economic development and those type of things? Because I got an idea that I want to try to.
We, we still have vacancies and, and this is top of the head. Yeah, this is Community Development Director. The position is still vacant with grants and administrator. And Executive Secretary for, for, for my office, those three positions. They've all been advertised in multiple different venues, but we have, we have not gotten back the adequate responses in filling any of those positions.
Well, I'd like to put on the agenda, if we can maybe if you look at hosting a job fair, even if we can contact workforce development and advertise all those positions so we can help us move forward by getting those vacancies advertised.
That's one, that's one of the venues that we advertise through, so we're doing it now.
But I was even thinking about a job fair or something that we can have to help promote the vacancies. And one last thing before I put it on the agenda item. I know you mentioned about the monies that, that's pending legislative review for MLK. But what do we need to do to develop a plan? So if we, even if we get additional monies, we still got the 250 that we need to spend. And, and my concern with the climate, I don't want us to lose funding that we already have. So if we may can put that on the agenda to, I don't know if we need to see if we can put it on the agenda to put it out for RFP or what we need to do so we can go ahead and at least have a plan as even the money that we have. And then if we get the additional money to do the other stuff. And I'm not even opposed to us taking some of our own money to help complete the project as far as getting MLK.
To keep in track of our requests and the procedure we have in place. We want to go ahead and entertain a vote on those so they can be added to future agenda items. And with the understanding, we know that everything we put on the table don't happen immediately, but as early as possible, they are added by the city manager. So if you just quickly name, we're going to do yours in a cluster since we didn't do it individually. The three items that you wanted on there, and then we'll get a motion, a second, and vote on it very quickly.
Enhancing the security for, I don't know if we have, need to vote on the amount that you're going to spend on that first. Enhancing the security for the swimming pool was the first one.
So that would just be added to there, the city manager gets some quotes or prices, and then bring it back when we do to discuss it, to vote on it if need to be voted on?
It should be by item, so.
That's what I'm, yeah, I'm going by items.
And then the.
Just do that one first. Add in additional security for the marina surrounding the pool area.
I'll second.
Then move to the second. Call for questions. Here and now, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Second item.
A job fair for vacancies so we can try to get our city managers to get those positions to deal with some qualified candidates.
Can I add something up? It's, I'm not, I'm not changing that, but I'm just saying, could we add in there like a sliding scale? Because we get this complaint all the time that no one's disqualified. Is it that we don't want to pay them that amount of money? So we have a sliding scale, when you start at, instead of job paying 75,000, you start at 75,000, but you're not qualified for us to pay you 75,000. Maybe you potentially got, if we start you at 60,000, that's like a sliding scale with hiring.
I'm 60 to 70.
Well, I guess, once we bring it to the board, once we bring it to the, to the board to advertise position, when we put the positions out, we can have like a, a pay, a pay scale from position paid from 50 to 70,000 or.
That's a job of human resources.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I just want to caution the commission about the issues that have to do with the manager's purview. You all do set the budget, but in terms of telling him how to hire, you know, what he. But you can't, you can't give advice, you can, you can, you can state your, you can state your opinions. But you just want to be careful about going into areas where you're requiring him to hire a certain way or, you know, those kind of things, so that you're not interfering with.
No, I just.
Right.
I just not, I know we don't have to.
Would it be, is it improper in mind for us to, I mean, as far as the, the help him, assist him and completing or filling those vacancies with jobs?
Well, I think.
Just a suggestion, giving approval of the commission suggestions.
Yes, sir, I think you can suggest that, but in terms of, I don't think you can make it a requirement that that's how he should conduct it in order to hire someone. Because all of that is within his purview.
Right.
So the add-on request would be to add to future agenda item a job fair?
A, a discussion of a job fair, yes, sir.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Williams. Call for questions, here and there, ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by unanimous vote.
And the last one, to give him permission to put out for MLK to try to get the, I don't know if we need an engineer or what, a designer or whatever we might need to draw up a plan so we can know how and where we're going to start. Now, I know the 250, it was allocated for a specific reason. So we need to make sure that that money is spent where it's supposed to be, as it was, when it was requested, as for whatever the line items were for that.
So wouldn't the engineer do that? That would be the design phase, correct? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, but as Commissioner indicated a minute ago, there's, there's a scope of work that was approved for that particular funding. So if you do anything over and above and outside of that, you'd have to go ahead and request a, a change to the scope, which may or may not be granted by the funder.
We got 250,000, I think what we're relaxing for this be put on the agenda as agenda item. So we'll have a status of how and when and how we can move forward on that. And that money has been sitting there since like.
So it's money for design?
And also, whenever we put, when that comes back on the agenda, bring those nine items so we can know where those 250,000 is.
So was that money, well?
What's the money for again?
It was for those items that we was gonna have at the MLK park, whether it was a exercise area or whatever it was. It was already allocated, so it really wasn't in a design, it was just to get it done.
Just to get it done.
I think with some resurfacing of basketball courts was included in that as well. But there, there were well-defined, defined scope.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we need to really find out what was the deadline of that. I'm surprised, I'm, I'm just praying for that the state don't retrieve that money back.
That's what I'm afraid of.
We need to start spending whatever we can towards completing whatever was on that list.
That's, that's the goal.
Do you know we got a process in place?
And it goes back to what we just described with the.
There was been no follow-up, nobody held accountable.
Just for sake of the minutes, can we? Do we get the motion clearly?
No, for using it when we get.
That we put the agenda item for the Martin Luther King Design Phase for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. We had a motion.
Second.
And a second. Call for questions, here and now, ready for a vote? Roll call.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Just be mindful, I know we got a lot of things on our plate, but let's try to limit to one or two each time we do it, so we don't have too many in one time. Commissioner Bolden, thank you, sir.
I might ask for some of the things I've been asking for before. I think we asked about a program for accepting money. If we could put that on the agenda, discuss it to see where we are with that. Okay, so I move that we come back with quoting information on a program for accepting money.
What do you mean specifically by?
Like when they paying to go to football games and things like that. It was requested that we, that that be looked into.
We're asking for the city manager to put on the agenda item for discussion of trading a policy of accepting money.
No.
No?
No, we asked last time about checking into a program, a machine, where everybody go cashless. That the city get a program, that's like the school district has, you want to buy your tickets, you have to go through, you don't use money anymore.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're trading a policy there.
It wasn't a policy, we just told them to look into getting a, checking into a program to, to pay.
I think the mayor is trying to steer you in a direction, Vice Mayor, in terms of creating a policy that would allow that to happen. And not, and not pinpointing anything specifically. Goes back to what the city attorney mentioned a minute ago.
It's, it's basically saying what you're saying, but in a, a way that.
A policy that, that, that they would have to follow in order to do that, we have to put in a policy for.
Okay.
And I will, I will let you know that every time that we have a future agenda item mentioned, that we have a list, the clerk is real good in keeping that list. So none of those items go away. We just need to prepare plans and work around something to put it in a position and bring it back to the commission. So none of those things have been ignored or taken off the list. That, that list is, is a running list that we work off of.
Okay, so I don't need to ask to put the cemetery back on again? I've been asking for the cemetery for the longest. Okay, well, well, just the last one.
Let me, let's quickly vote on this, this policy one, which is already kind of incorporated in there, they already have it, but just to be clear, that's what we're more so.
Policy for collecting funds.
Okay. Do we get a second? Second by Commissioner Bolden. Call for question, here and now, ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by unanimously.
And just my last one, if we can get an update with what's going on with the marina. I know we haven't talked about that in a while, so.
Specifically the restaurant?
The restaurant and the money they owe, the cabin that, that they, what that is, that's the camper that's up there. We getting funding for that, and all of that, that goes together.
As a future agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Do I need a second?
A second. Good motion, a second. Ready for a vote? Questions? No questions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Carolyn Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. And we'll move to our new Commissioner Scott. Thank you, sir. All right. General comments from the public. Are there any comments cards from our public?
Yes, one, Miss Anna Eifel. My apologies. Anna Eifel, Healthier Glaze, I was going to try to say this when this, when former Vice Mayor Mervin was here. I had put in a comment card to thank her for her service and on behalf of Healthier Glaze. I just want to make sure that I did that publicly. Thank her for her service, thank her for her collaboration, working with Healthier Glaze on several projects. I, just so you guys know for a historical reference, the I Love Pahokee Day, when Ms. Harvey was the, I think she was the director at the time, or she went, Ms., Mervin went to a conference, Neighbor Works Conference, and came back. And that was the reason how I Love Pahokee Day got restarted. So I just wanted to just give you that as a reference of, of the services she's done and, and things that we've done. So I just wanted to just give you that as a reference, uh, of the services she's done and, and things that we've done. So I just say on behalf of Healthier Glaze, uh, thank you, Miss Mervin, for your service. Uh, the other question I have is, Healthier Glaze tried to do a lot of activities and projects in Pahokee, and I try to utilize your spaces, but just so I'm clear, right now, um, the senior resource room, what's the status of that and the cafeteria? Because sometimes I be trying to do like, um, activities for residents, and so, so we've been using the mar- Marina, which is good, but I just wanna just make sure from my reference, like, what's the status of spaces? So in case I need to use them, I can, I'll know if they're available or not.
Okay. We, we usually don't rent out the senior room.
Okay.
But the, the application for rental facilities, you have a list that's available.
Okay.
Anything that's on that list for rental, you can utilize those.
Okay.
Cafeteria. Cafeteria is a facility that we rent out.
Okay.
Uh, but there, there are different recommend, different requirements for each facility as you rent it out.
Okay, and just to make sure I'm clear, so anytime we reserve a space, um, that we're gonna have people in, is, is, is it a standard that we have all, we have to have a liability insurance? I just wanna make sure for.
Absolutely.
For clarification, okay.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
I think that is it, thank you, my friend, thank you.
Okay, just hold on, just make sure it was any other.
I'm sorry, Jack Finkel.
Jack Finkel?
Jack Finkel.
What?
Your comment card?
I'm sorry?
You were looking at comments? You still, do you still wanna comment, or you don't wanna?
Yeah, I wanna comment.
Go ahead.
Go to the podium.
Hi, I'm Jack Finkel, eighteen ninety-seven Baker Point Road. I'm probably a Nidewish resident here. I have had several talks with Mister Jackson, and he has helped me along. And I just wanna let everybody know that we have reopened the flea market. I'm offering it to you to use, over by the community box, box set gym. I would like to speak to you about getting you some money for those awards, setting up a little charity thing over at my flea market. And I am here to help build this town out, back to what I was told it has been in the past. I've been trying since I've been here to help people learn to trade, to get them up and out, to help the community. And I have found a partner that is willing to help build this community up, taking your existing buildings that aren't used, fixing them up and working a deal out with you that we can all make some money for like rentals, 'cause we want this place to be a destination resort. We wanna turn the box fit gym into a place that people can come and have it look and represent Pahokee with painting all over the place that's representative of what is in this city, the lake, the birds, the animals that are just running around wild. We wanna bring people in and let them spend money here, instead of letting them go around the lake everywhere else. I've asked Mister Jackson about somehow getting the, the restaurant at the Marina going, uh, because I believe that that will also bring people. From what I understand, this is some of the greatest fishing in the country. Why not utilize it? I just think that this place has so much potential, it's beautiful. When we first arrived in Pahokee, and when we drove up Baker Point Road and saw all the palm trees, it was beautiful. It's unfortunate while we're there, but it was beautiful. And I just wanna see this place grow, and everybody work together, and be a community again, and just clean up the places that need cleaning up. And we're willing to offer our services to do that, to help this city grow. So I'm willing to work, but anybody who wants to work with me. Thank you for your time, congratulations, by the way, to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna get you in one second. Uh, Mister Jackson, I just wanted, and, and the city clerk, we do have on there for future agenda items, the Marina status of the restaurant, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's already on there. We, we're gonna be talking about that at some very near future, that restaurant, what we're gonna do.
I'm gonna go off on my services, do whatever you guys need.
Right, we're gonna allow Mister Trough to come up just briefly to make his comment.
Hurt report for eighty-eight thirty-three Eldorado Drive. Um, I would like to speak on behalf of the high school senior prom, junior prom that's coming up, and I think in Baker Point, we had a brief discussion, I think I talked to Mister Jackson, I think you were there, and, uh, PBSO. The prom is scheduled for Friday, the eighteenth. So the question was, um, in the past, you know, when the kids come out, they call them to promenade, um, so they're going back to MLK Park with that. So they're like, I know it's a, a holiday, it's a good Friday.
But it's May eighteenth.
City's gonna be open and whatnot, but the kids, they gonna show up. So we're dealing with, um, the AP, um, Doctor Michael Moore, um, the senior sponsor, Miss Bryant, I mean, Patrick. Um, and Miss Bryant is the junior sponsor. But they was just trying to see, what can we do as a city to help out, 'cause of the traffic? Over the past years, you know, it's a good turnout, a lot of people show up, so for PBSO, give them heads up, give the city heads up that it's coming on the eighteenth. They were trying to block it from five to seven, try to get the kids to the prom, I think it's in relative.
That's April, the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, yeah, on the eighteenth. So the question was, request that we can, you know, with the sheriff department being a member, former officer, whatnot, I spoke with PBSO, so they're waiting on the city to, I guess, to give us, you know, their support. Support is gonna happen, but we just trying to, you know, make it safe as possible. Um, I know it's sho- it's late on one hand, but we kinda, conversation I think going on, but it's official. They was trying to see if they were gonna prefer doing the Marina or MLK Park. They did a survey through the schools and whatnot, the kids chose MLK Park, I guess it's tradition or whatever. So I just wanted to make everybody aware, and whatever we can do in, in, in the interim to make it safe. Um, like I said, the time is from five to seven, that they wanna have the kids come through to try to get them out of the park, so they can, you know, make the drive home to West Palm. So they just told me to bring it up and see if we need to conversate with PBSO or Mister Jackson, uh, after the meeting and whatnot, but they needed the blessing of the, PBSO needed the blessing of the city in order for them to move forward, but, uh, so, no, for last minute, but.
I suggest, I suggest, Mayor, if, if I can, to, um, complete the application process to use MLK Park. In that process, it will outline everything that's required and needed, if you're gonna have a.
Oh, not, not, but see, that's what I said, it's no, it's just one of those things, it's gonna happen. It's not like a, if any of you going out there being, being there to do it, uh, cars, 'cause if we went through about permit and same, because it's not a marching, kids just gonna show up. It's like, they say, what is it, Friday, I mean, Sunday, or like that, or something, people just show up. It's not like someone just hosting a game, it's just a drive, and the kids come through in their cars.
Okay.
And they, you know, take pictures, so it's not one individual that's being responsible, school not responsible, you know, the parent, it's just, so it just heads up pretty much, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, I have a quick question, and, and it, it is annual, and it has always, you know, no trouble or anything like that, but let me just ask a question, is anybody, who's gonna help, like, control? I know one time they had someone trying to help control the traffic, we know they can't block up the street for safety reasons, so is it anybody that's going to actually, like, be volunteering?
That's what you asking us for.
Helping with the traffic control?
Well, first, we just give them notes that it's happening, so we know that it's not blindside. In the beginning, we had a group of parents, um, we had like Doctor, um, Michael Moore. We were trying to get ahead of this thing.
Okay.
But this is something that it was hard to.
Try to do.
Get ahead of, because everybody, whatever, usually, you know, my son, or whatever, everybody got their own thing, but we know at the end of the evening, they gonna end up at the park.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we was trying to work and trying to make it more organized, but it didn't happen like that, so.
Right.
We know it's happening, so, you know, just be aware, and it's good Friday, you know, telling that the city, from our center, will be closed, so you won't have the city staff that's here or whatever. PBSO is, you know, they have guys, but just like a muckball, at, out of the muckball, they gonna show up. So be prepared or be unprepared, so we just trying to, you know, make, whatever we can do at this short notice, or, or whatnot, to make sure.
I really don't think there's anything officially that we can do if, if you're not, um, making an official application to use it, and I com, I understand what you're saying, but my suggestion in future years, if, if, if it's only, even if it's a nonprofit, to kind of take that on as a project, um, and then have that run through the process that will, will afford you proper police, uh, for traffic. If a road needs to be blocked, all of that's included in, in, in a permit application. But if it's done, if it's done, you know, without any structure, any organization or any agency applying for it, then it becomes a situation where it can, it can get out of troll, control, uh, the city. Uh, liability is at stake, it's a city park, so all of those things need, need to be taken into consideration. And I know it's something that's happened, uh, traditionally, it's a tradition.
Yes, every year.
But the formation of structuring it is something that I really, really recommend moving forward in the future.
And that's what we try to, as parents, we try to get ahead of it, on Baker, when we started Baker Point, but ownership, no one wanted to.
But they won't do the pain, they're gonna do that, you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay the fee.
It's one of those things that is hard.
Who gonna pay it?
Yeah.
Who gonna have anything?
Almost like tune up, tune up Sundays, where you say, hey.
Yeah, turn up Sunday, one of the other things.
Unorganized, unstructured, but they showed up anyway.
I understand.
Yeah, and I definitely understand what you're saying, somebody got to take.
Well, see, that's the thing, somebody take responsibility, everybody said, 'cause you're unknown.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you know, the same name on a document, you know, some charge that, that really.
And he realizing this late notice is probably not, but in the future, some kinda way, whether it's the psych committed, somebody need to take a little ownership.
Nobody wanted to, yeah, so when you say psych, it goes back to the school.
Yeah.
So the school, the school said, no, we can't, they doing the prom, they gonna be in West Palm, so that's like a community type, so it's for the community to take.
Yeah. But we'll work with it in the future, but we'll definitely do what we can on our end to kinda make sure it's safe as possible, but ain't a whole lot we can do, it's unstructured. Yeah, right, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
If it's more than fifty people, y'all gonna have to.
Well, uh, how many people approximately?
More than fifty.
Hundreds.
For, for participants, right now, they're dealing by four, they said between forty and sixty.
Participants.
Oh.
That's not counting parents and aunties and.
Well, for the party, you have, and then.
That's not including parents and aunties.
Glade Central prom is the same day. So that's the other thing, though, so everybody said, no, it's too much going, you know, for someone to kind of spread the Glade Central, folk prom the same day. And everybody with that picture taken and, and whatnot, it's gonna be like a minimum vote.
Yeah.
And this is next weekend?
Friday, yes. Holiday, good Friday, people work, so, you know.
Okay, now we'll move to commissioners' comments for the good of the order, and I'm gonna start with our new commissioner, Mister Scott.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out. I'd really like to thank everyone who took the, uh, opportunity to vote. And whether you voted for me or Miss Mervin, we, I know she appreciate you, and I do too. And, um, I hope that I can represent this city, uh, just my veteran, and help the other commissioners, and Mister Jackson, and, uh, Miss Weeks, take this, um, city where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Okay. Vice, Vice Mayor Williams?
I just wanna say thank you to all of the residents that came out tonight and that are listening, but I also want to let the residents know, I went to the, um, neat grant meeting, and I, um, have been working with Crystal and trying to decide what I can do for the city to get some of that funding that they have, and so what I did submit, I submitted, um, and she said she's gonna get back with me, she's approved two of the projects that I can move forward with, but I wanted, lighting has been a concern of mine, and so what I decided to do, I submitted it for lighting for each of the areas for, um, homeowners, because they were saying that for the city, they couldn't just go through the city and put lighting. So Glade Citizen Villa, I submitted it for, Streamline, I submitted it for, East Lake Village, I submitted it for, and behi- and Amarillas, the houses behind Amarillas. And so I have until the ninth, so I have to ride around to see if I forgot a development. And so she gave me the information on a company that has already been approved by the county, and so I spoke with her today, and she said she'll get back with me to see if, um, the locations, if to make sure that all homeowners live there, and that there are no homeowners association fees, and she'll let me know everything by Friday. So I'm just asking the residents, I've been talking with, um, different pastors from different churches. I'm at the commissioner's office every Monday, and I'm going to need your help and support in getting these, um, grants done. Um, they are due in May, I think it's May ninth, tenth that they're due, and so I just want everybody to pray for me and keep their fingers crossed that we can get these solar lights in the different communities for safety. And have a good night.
Commissioner Bowden?
No comments.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes, I just wanna re, uh, go back to something Mister Jackson said. Um, he said you had to go back and try to reestablish some relationships, and you felt somewhat embarrassed. Don't feel embarrassed, when we hired you, Mister Jackson, we knew we needed your help, and we had confidence that you were gonna be able to do, do the job. You know, we know, we know the city was, needed a lot of help, and a lot of things were behind, and you, and we expect you to be able to, to go back and help redevelop some of those relationships, and, and that's a thing that we all gotta do as far as portraying our image with legislators, with wherever we go, we gotta make sure that we putting forth the positive and reestablishing all those necessary relationships. So you, you should never feel embarrassed for, for doing that, so I just wanna just.
I think you misunderstood, when I say when I have to ask for documents that we don't have.
Even that, that was before your time, so you trying, you in the seat now, you trying to get things right, so. And I, that sorta somewhat bothered me, because we got confident, that's why we hired you, we know.
Yes, sir.
The man, and, uh, secondly, I want to, um, thank Mister, uh, congratulate Mister Scott and for his win, and I wanna congratulate, uh, Commissioner Bowden and Mayor Bab for their win again, um. Let's work together in unity and move our city forward, and I love all of y'all, ain't a thing y'all can do about it.
City commissioners, having taken care of all business brought before us, I entertain a motion for the adjournment of this meeting.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Scott for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for questions, ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Cowan-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, this meeting is adjourned at nine oh nine PM.